Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday till last second. It's good to see everyone here. Before we get started this morning, I want to extend to you happy Fourth of July. I don't want to forget it, so I'm gonna say it first. Mr. Marone, is there anything that we needed to add to the agenda or anything at all? I just want to make sure we don't miss anything. I know that. I'm just asking before we get started. Is there anything we need to add to the agenda at all? I don't think there is.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Ward, can you please say prayer?
Lord, we come to you today as we conduct our county business. We pray that you will guide our thoughts, our minds, and our thought processes, Lord. We praise you for the promise you gave us this morning when we saw the rainbows, and we hope that, pray for everybody in the room, everybody that's sick and just needs your touch, in your holy name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Okay, so do we have a motion this morning to approve the agenda as it's been printed?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison and Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Next is approval of minutes and payment of the county bills.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Mr. Marone, I'm just gonna ask, because I have a couple here. I have several public comments that are printed here for me. There are four total. Two of them in the, what they have listed here says during the attorney report, so I'm assuming they want to wait until the attorney report to speak?
Yes, sir. I got the same impression, sir.
Okay. Then I had two that did not make that designation. They're both, I don't think they're in the room, but they might be. Ben Matherson, maybe they're attending by Zoom?
Mr. Matherson, if you're attending by Zoom, would you please indicate that by raising your hand, so we can unmute you. You could address the board.
Well, we'll just do it then when we get to the attorney report like the rest of them. Both of their, both have the same exact wording on them. So what about Ms. Sharon Matherson? Is she on Zoom?
Not yet, sir.
Okay. So they might be wanting to do it during their attorney report, so we will do that.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Quentin Eastburg, is he here yet?
He is right.
Oh, he's attended by Zoom. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, commissioners. How y'all doing?
Doing good.
I apologize for the lack of video. I'm driving, so I just figured I'd unmute and save you the having to see my ugly mug there on the TV screen.
Just keep both hands on the wheel, sir.
But, so I'm just doing a recap of the RRTP, Mr. Marone. Is that correct?
Yes. So commissioners, if you remember the last meeting, I gave you some information from Mr. John Berry in reference to the TAC, you know, and that regional, and I apologize for the long name of what it is. But Mr. Berry said there were five, there were three or four different categories where they wanted five projects for you, and I did say that Mr. Berry would come back, but he prefers that someone from ARPC explains exactly what it is, so that we can have those projects too, Mr. Berry, before the August 2nd meeting of this technical assistance committee, technical advisory committee.
Sure. So the way it was designed was we were gonna have three appointees from each county. Mr. Berry was one of those three, you know, to work on this technical advisory committee. Commissioner Sanders, you're on there, I believe, as well, you know, to be working in unison with these three folks. So then, this was a homework assignment as part of the first technical advisory committee meeting, was for everybody individually to kind of informally poll the community, you know, having lived there and know some of the needs, the transportation infrastructure needs of the community, come back with some of their highest project, you know, highest needs that relate to those four topic areas. So it's safety, system connectivity, ACES, which is automated, connected, you know, shared use vehicle, and what's the other one? Safety system connectivity, resilience, that's the third one, resilience, and then ACES. So we were asking each individual TAC member to provide five projects, if possible, related to each of those four categories. So 20 projects total that are, that are needs of the county. Then, when we come back in August, we're gonna have all the projects from each individual member, we're gonna compile them together, and then work together to select the top five from each category. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're basically creating a large pool of projects, you know, and then we're gonna work together as a group to identify what really are the top five for scoring and ranking within each of those subcategories. So part of that homework, I guess, it sounds like Mr. Berry came to the board, you know, requesting if there was anything from the board that they wanted to see specifically on that. But we're happy to, you know, it's gonna be, he's gonna be the one representing those projects at the next meeting in August. So that's really kind of what the background was. You know, the technical advisory committee members are the champions for the county, are the ones that are, you know, wanting to solicit those. So, you know, getting feedback from folks, I think, was part of the, part of the homework. So I apologize if there was any confusion there.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, you have any questions? So, Mr. Eastburg, as I understand it from talking to you and talking to Mr. Berry, yeah, there's gonna be, some counties, as we're forming all this, that are actually gonna have maybe not greater needs, but have things more ready to go. And I understand how that works. But listen, I'm just happy that Franklin County is gonna be a part of somebody's regional transportation plan. We've never had that before, so I think it's a win-win for us all the way. I know that in talking to Mr. Berry, he was, you know, that was one of his things. He said, well, some of these other counties look like they have everything more lined up than we do. Well, that's, that's just part of it. But at least we're part of the conversation. We have a seat at the table. So I'm good with it, you know?
Sure. And they might, but the goal is, I understand it, is going to, within the plan itself, you're gonna have Franklin's identified project. You're gonna have, you know, Gulf and Calhoun and Liberty's identified project. But there, you know, that is really what drives the regionalism. If there's a 98 project that's happening, well, that ties in, you know, across county. Maybe you can, I mean, the opportunity for joint applications or for, you know, larger grants or, you know, things like that. And that's kind of what the goal, the regional project itself. So here, it should not be a competition. Like, we're still identifying, we're not saying Gulf County has three projects that rank higher than Franklin, you know, county project. Franklin County is gonna list their top five projects, regardless of where that is in the process. But we'll be able to identify that so that when grant funding opens up, we're identifying, okay, we're at the PD and E level of this, or at design construction dollars, you know, so on and so forth. And, you know, priorities change over time. So we're gonna come back every couple of years and say, okay, that project was completed, cross it off, we'll add a new project on there, and so forth. So it's gonna be, the document plan to be updated, I believe, at least bi-yearly or bi-annually. And that's what we're working through with the DOT right now as well.
Sounds good. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Eastburg. I do think that it's helpful for the board to kind of understand what's going on. Again, this is something we're standing up. It's new for us. It's new for us to be a part of it, so, of something like this. So I think it's one. Commissioner Sanders?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to weigh in a little bit. The only other time that we've had an opportunity, Franklin County has had an opportunity to be able to talk about transportation issues, dealing with Franklin County and this region, was back in 2005 when Governor Bush appointed the Northwest Transportation Corridor Authority, of which I sat on there until I retired, back in 2018. At that time, the corridor authority had jurisdiction over from, like, Wallculla to Pensacola, Scandia County. And there was a lot of projects that needed to come on board, but they never just couldn't get it down. So I'm glad to see this come back up, because there is some needs in our county, as long as it adjacent county, to be able to get these things done. And like I'll always say, I'm looking forward to that Noah L. Lockley Jr. spur, and I always will. But I'm glad to see this happening. I'm glad that ARPC, the Appalachia Regional Plan Council jumped on it and is moving ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
And I thank you for that, Mr. Chairman, because you're one of the instrumental people in it.
No problem. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else having questions for, commissioners having questions for Mr. Eastburg, or discussions? Quentin, thank you for being with us this morning and giving us an update. We really do appreciate it. When's the next meeting?
We're gonna do a virtual meeting next Thursday for Q and A. At our last TAC meeting, we had a lot of questions, you know, from the board members. But we're gonna do a, kind of like a virtual Q and A on Thursday, the 11th, and then the official in-person TAC meeting will be, I believe that's August 1st, the first Thursday of August. So that would be, I believe, the first, if memory serves. And that'll be over in Bluntstown.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for that, Dave. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, y'all, for having me. Y'all have a great day and a great Fourth of July.
Yes, sir. You too. Mr. Howard Neighbors, you're up next.
Morning, commissioners. How y'all doing?
Doing good. How you doing?
Been hot. Very, very hot. But we hanging in there, commissioners. Well, I do got one action item this morning that, Mr. Leon retired, which I got it in the board report. I think the, well, 17th of this month will be his last day, July. So I'd like to ask the board for approval to re-advertise him for inmate supervisor.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Crowe. Any discussion before you vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And then also, which I'm sure some of y'all heard about Beetle leaving, though he, you know, feels he can do better on his own, which was mechanic. I want to see if anybody wants to move up to that position. If not, then I'll be back with the board to advertise for mechanic.
Well, are, do you want to, are you wanting to advertise it in-house first? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, sir. I hadn't did that yet, so I wonder.
Right. So we probably need to do that by motion of vote, correct?
Not if it's in-house, sir. Because usually when you advertise, what the motion is usually about, and the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have to spend money when we run the ads. So that's why they come before you, because most of these, most of these positions are in your budget. They're not new positions. So, yeah.
All right. I just want to make sure we're crossing our t's and dotting our i's.
Did it. Correct. What Michael said, too. But we see, either way, if somebody does take that position, I still have to advertise for whoever, a truck driver or inmate supervisor, whoever, if somebody moves up to that position later on, so.
Right. So he was, he was the one that worked on the small engines, correct?
Small engines and mechanic, too, with the big trucks and stuff, so.
He was a good worker.
And he turned us two weeks' notice in, so he left on a good term. So he just felt like he could do better on his own. So opened up in my little shop, I think, so.
Yeah. He is.
Yep.
All right. Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Neighbors?
No. Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate that the inmates still seem to be an issue with our road department and our parks and rec department. I just hate that we're sending people to go pick these inmates up, and you're getting zero. It's a waste of county, in my opinion, county resources, county time. And I know that we're not at budget yet, but this is something we really need to look at when budget, now versus later, is these, these openings that we have. Are they, you got people readily filling out applications, wanting to work? Because it's not easy work.
No, no. That's correct, Commissioner Dane. So, and the last time that we've, it was probably a year before we replaced somebody, so.
And that's a problem. Moving forward, I think we really need to look at, I don't know if we need to maybe subcontract and work out, or, you know, I don't want to take jobs away from people, but if there's nobody working, I know, how many people do you have retiring in the next, let's say, three, let's say, five years? Because that's on your, your plan, your, that we give you guys.
Probably six or seven, I must say, within the next five, six years.
That's a lot. So we really need to pay attention and keep that in mind as we move forward towards budget talks and such. But anyway, thank y'all for what you do. I know it's hot out there. Make, make sure you guys stay hydrated, because it's a lot of, lot of heat strokes going on.
Yeah, and I tell them, you get hot stuff. Well, we don't get it today, we get tomorrow.
That's right.
It ain't, it ain't going nowhere, so.
That is true.
Yeah, exactly.
That grass is gonna keep on growing without matter.
And you mow it, it's gonna grow right back.
It, it quick.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Neighbors?
Yes, sir.
How long you
How long you planning to advertise internally?
What's that now?
How long are you planning to advertise internally?
I bring it back before the board the next month, probably, probably next week, after the holidays is over. I think I, I got one or two HAZ mentioned to me that they, you know, wanna try to do, take that position, to try to work on the small engine and stuff, so.
Okay. Thank you for taking care of those ditches on Twenty-fourth for me.
You're welcome.
We, letting the rest of the board know, in preparation for storms, Mr. Neighbors and his crew have been helping with the ditches, and I've let's call it on Bluff and Twenty-fourth, I know he gotta go back to Bluff.
Yeah, they, they got it tomorrow, they did the, the south side instead of the north, so they got to come back, so, that's what we're waiting on, on the Bluff Road on that one area. And I got it with Greg also on the alleyway that we looked at, before, we got, we got to clean that thing up.
Yeah.
Yeah, talked to Greg with, with, before no cut goes into the market, it's got to be cleaned up, so, I mean, you got, when you looked at it, it's six-foot tall bushes in there, so.
That's the other issue that we had, was, uh, me and Mr. Neighbors went out to residents on Twelfth Street, and what it is, the hospital, the overflow in front of the hospital is going through the drain, it can't, it is draining down the alley where the ditch hasn't been properly maintained, so, that whole alley is flooded and is, is, uh, approaching people yards, the water is.
Yeah.
So, it's flooding their back, at least three houses back there.
Yes, sir.
So, we're working in conjunction with the city on that.
And all that water drains from the hospital south, back, back two ninety-eight, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, while Mr. Neighbors is here, I think it's the proper time to address the paving project out on Haskock, I know it kinda, y'all got some phone calls, whatnot, but, uh, just to clarify, that, that was a, basically a neighbor squabble, I'm not gonna get into the trenches with that, but just so this board knows, and Mr. Neighbors can verify, and we have documentation, we've been maintaining that road for, I, I went back as far as ten years, thinking go back further. So, just, so you know, no one was forced, no one was, uh, a, a, as a matter of fact, it was the complete opposite. I had the go-ahead from every neighbor out there that was, that was, uh, at first kinda not wanting it done, but they gave me the final blessing and we moved forward with it. So, whatever you're hearing out there, whatnot, you know, I think there's still some squabbling going on, but, but this, this board needs to be rest assured that we didn't go outside of our, our capabilities and whatnot, and Mr. Neighbors is, uh, here, so I figured I'd bring that up, so if he needed any input with that. But while I got you there, did you, uh, I, I seen on your report, we went out there, made sure that we had some good transitions into the driveways and whatnot.
Yes, sir, we did. Some stuff on the shoulders need to be kinda built up a little bit, but we get to that, so.
Okay.
But we did fix all the entrance off that road going into the driveways, so.
Well, outside of that, I don't have anything, good job, you guys, as always, I know y'all doing the best you can.
Yeah.
And everyone, please be patient with the road department there.
Oh, yeah, we get it, and like I say, it'll be there, so.
But I, I will say one thing, just so I can stand on my soapbox, and it's frustrating, especially as a, a business owner around here, that you can advertise a hundred jobs, nobody wants to work, and that's, that's a big issue, at the end of the day, you know, and I've thought about this numerous times, because, uh, Ms., Commissioner Ward hit on something, I, I know, I know, I've known you my whole life, I've known most everybody that's on that road department my whole life.
Yeah.
And we're not getting any younger.
Oh, no, so we all getting older.
But there's nobody coming in behind, uh, we just don't have that workforce in a younger, at a younger age, you know, we've got people that's fifty-plus out there in the heat. And like I said in the previous meeting, we, what, seventy-five miles long coast, you know, from one end on, and that's just on the coast, that's not counting all the inside roads and stuff that the county has to maintain and unincorporate in Franklin County. Again, to, to the citizens of Franklin County, be patient with us, you know, Buster's got his cane out there, he's, he's gonna get to, but, uh, we appreciate what y'all do.
Well, man.
Chairman, if no one else, a couple of things. One, the clerk and deputies have also mentioned this to me over the last few months, the clerk did this morning, 'cause apparently she's gotten some complaints, and she witnessed one today. We have to do something about the traffic that's coming right in front of the back door of the courthouse, people are just speeding down there, and they have no respect for the little, the crosswalk that's there. And sometimes you have kids that just, they'll get away from their mother, they'll run across the street to get to the car. So, if the board has no objections, I'd like to work with Howard and Clerk and Shane, see what we can do about trying to find a way to reduce the speed, the traffic, the speed that comes through here, you know, can control the traffic and the speed, I'll put it that way, right behind.
What else can we do to control the speed? I mean, you have deputies that are within fifty yards of it.
Yeah, I mean, but they're inside, so if, if, if you're not from here, you, you, you know, and you're here visiting, you fly right through, you don't look for the speed limit, I mean, I don't want to say the word, that may cause the county attorney to jump out of his seat after me, but I really don't wanna say speed bump, per se, but maybe there's something else we can put there to reduce the speed. I will also talk to the county's engineer and see what they think about it, what else we can do.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, could you?
Talking about right here in front of the courthouse, where people are coming across and coming in.
You talking about on the highway side?
No, right here.
Behind the back door.
Oh, really? Down that little road?
Oh, yeah.
So, so do we need, maybe we need to look at, and it'll be an engineer thing, but maybe we need to look at, uh, having a sign posted for the speed and putting it on the other side of the road, so they know they're already reduced speed coming in.
Maybe.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But.
And it's not less, like?
Yes, I just, I mean, you're very limited on what you're gonna be able to do, that's control.
It is.
Because, I mean, I don't wanna say nothing bad, but people are gonna do what people do.
Yeah.
Until you, till they see a repercussion for it.
Unfortunately, yes.
Well, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, that, that's basically a parking lot, I mean, I know it's got a name on it, but, and, and Attorney Shuler, I'm gonna make you uncomfortable, but why can't we just put a speed bump in the middle of it? I mean, it's, it's not like, uh, um, yeah, it's a parking lot, you don't have, I mean, it's a one-way. Um, you, you care to chime in on that?
Sure, it's the city road, not a county road, first of all, so we have to work in conjunction with the city of Appalachia Cola with whatever needs to be done. I prefer the phrase "traffic calming device."
There you go.
There ought to be some consideration given to some intermediate steps before the most radical step is taken, for example, and I would consider a traffic calming device to be pretty radical, because, anyway, y'all know my feeling about traffic calming devices. A flashing sign that's radar controlled, like, when you come into Mexico Beach, they have that flashing sign that, that basically, it reads your speed, and if you're over the posted speed limit, it has, you know, lights that flash to get your attention, to slow you down, maybe something like that. But whatever we do in terms of that city road, we, we do need to work in conjunction with at least the city administrator, and whatever we do with their street, so they're okay with it.
I will. Again, just, just orient me, we're talking about?
That one-way road on the riverside.
The stop sign coming in.
The side of.
Spending money on a flashing sign from right there.
Well, if, if traffic's indeed a problem, I mean.
Well, I mean, go ahead, I think Madam Clerk has some.
One of the problems is, there is a stop sign out there by Blue Moon, but nobody stops there, they keep on going. So, I, I mean, this morning, I literally was at the, um, crosswalk, and somebody was driving at least twenty-five miles an hour out of state tag, zooming right by me, didn't even bother to stop, and this is not the first time.
But.
And you've got children coming out of the courthouse, running around, and I'm just, I'm afraid something's gonna happen one day.
Oh, I agree with you, I'm not, I'm not denying that.
You would be amazed how fast these people go. You would.
Well, that's, if they're rolling through a stop sign, that could be a traffic stop.
But they can't get out fast enough to stop it, so that's another problem. By the time they get out, they're gone.
Maybe, maybe we need to put some signage up, too, because maybe these people that are from out of state don't realize at that stop sign that they're coming into a parking lot where the courthouse is, maybe they think it's just a through, a through street, so maybe we can put signage up that says "no through traffic" or something along those lines, because they may not be aware that they're entering, they, they travel downtown, they come to that stop sign, and they're like, okay, which, they can't go right Leslie Street, and I think it, they can't go, they can go left, 'cause, okay, but then they may not realize that coming straight, they're coming into the courthouse parking lot, so maybe, I don't know, maybe education-wise.
I think that the stop sign at the Blue Moon location the clerk's talking about is, uh, is visually blocked by lots of things that we might be able to do to clear it out and make the stop sign more visible to people.
And then it's about enforcement, too, Mr. Chairman, you said that the city or county can sit there and try to monitor the speed and people running that stop sign, but then again, you know, they can't be everywhere at the same time either, you know, so.
And, and I would add, whenever you have a parking lot full, like this morning, there was nobody there, so that was easy to see, but whenever you have a parking lot full, it blocks their view whenever they're going, so if somebody's coming out real quick, something's gonna happen. So, that's what we're not concerned with. And the deputies are, too, uh, security's mentioned it to me a couple of times.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chairman, it's not realistic, you can't have a deputy sitting on it twenty-four seven, you know?
It wouldn't take many times.
Well, if they're from out, if they're from out of state, you know, you know, and I, I'm quite sure there's some local people doing it, too, but.
Yeah. A lot of it goes away if, if and when Leslie Street gets paved.
Yeah. And also, I will tell you, just from some conversations I've had with city staff, city right-ofways is, is an issue, because, you know, obviously, especially in the more historic district, people have planted, you know, all kind of vegetation along the city right-ofway, and it looks nice, but then it impedes stop signs, and, and I think they're having kind of a, a little battle with some of the city residents about removing some of said vegetation, so, um, there's another issue as well.
I'll get, oh, sorry.
In reference to, you know, your traffic up here, like Attorney Shuler said, is, you got so much vegetation and tree coverage, sometimes you don't really see that stop sign. However, I think that, like Commissioner Ward said, it's some kind of signage, but it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be signage to get their attention, something with flashing lights. Instead, on the right side, 'cause it, 'cause when you got traffic or a parking lot's full, you can't see right there, so the sign is probably gonna have to be on the left side to be with lights, so, that's something that we may consider, that you can talk to the engineer about.
I will, I'll talk to the city and the engineer.
It's gotta be something unique like that, if we don't go, and that's considered a traffic calming device as well. Maybe we can take that approach, instead of going to the extreme first, see if that works.
So, Mr. Neighbors, you're talking to the city about getting that, around that stop sign cleared, and some of the other issues, if you would, at least let the board know the differences between these traffic calming devices, in other words, is a, is traditional speed bump, two thousand dollars, and a flashing light, fifteen thousand dollars, we, we kinda need to know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay. One more item before Howard walks away, and this is actually an action item on my report, page twenty-eight, item number three. I was informed by the clerk that state and court offices will be closed on Friday, July fifth, as part of the July fourth holiday week, and therefore, the clerk, court offices will be closed. I believe, uh, the other constitutional offices will also be closed on Friday. Excuse me, knowing this, is the board inclined to close the county offices? I've discussed this possibility with both Mr. Howard Neighbors before you, Mr. Fonda Davis, Mr. Neighbors will not close his offices on Monday, July eighth, if you do close on Friday, because as, as policy allows, when there is a holiday on the preceding Friday, he, he can close on the following Monday. He will flex his employees during the week of July eighth. Instead, Mr. Davis intends to have sufficient employees scheduled to cover the landfill and Parks and Recreation Departments during the holiday weekend. So, if you so desire board action to close county offices on Friday, July fifth, as part of the July fourth holiday weekend.
Okay. Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
I think we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. But, Mr. Howard, I notice, are we doing any Fridays at all yet?
Yes, sir, we started.
So, but we never get any inmates on Friday, period?
Yeah, we get them, we, I think we had three.
They're not listed on the report?
Two or three, might have been two on Friday.
There's not any reported on any Friday?
Well, well, half the crew were, so I think, I don't know, it might have been on the next board report, meaning it was on Friday.
Okay.
So, I think she turned the board report in Thursday, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good. The, uh, just wanted to make sure what we're looking at, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, thank you, too, for you and your crew, for everything y'all done to help me try to resolve some of the drainage issues around Carroll Street and that area, especially.
Hopefully, hopefully we got it fixed.
Hopefully, that's all we can do, sir, is try.
About a, about a week and a half of work in that area, but, especially digging, digging pipes up and lowering them, putting them back, so.
Yeah, it takes a lot to, uh, well, as Commissioner already said earlier, Commissioner Kuhn, knowing that storm season's upon us, we need to do our best to make sure that water's draining somebody, if we can. But thank you for everything y'all do, we really appreciate it, and I'll be calling you later down and talk to you about, do we still have, uh, I know we had them at one time, I don't know if they were yours, or some we had borrowed from somebody else, some like sawhorses or devices used to kinda block traffic?
Yeah, bear cage, bear cage, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll get with you later down, and try to use some of them this week.
Okay, I know, I know we give to jail about twelve or four, twelve, I think.
Okay.
So, for East Point, so they should be finished with them.
Okay.
As of yesterday, so.
All right, I'll get up with you about it.
Okay.
Thank you, anything, anything else, Commissioners? Mr. Howard, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank y'all, Commissioner.
Mr. Fonda Davis?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, I have one action item and a couple items, just for your information. The first item is an action, uh, Mr. Kennen Reed resigned from animal control, and I would like to get permission to re-advertise that position.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kuhn, second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Uh, back to some of the discussion about application, so in, in a case like this, I have been talking with the sheriff, uh, he shows some interest in taking over animal control also, so, if we don't get that, 'cause it takes more than one officer, which we have two, Albert Floyd, he's getting ready to retire, and Clayton Allen, so, but, uh, again, like I said, I have been in some discussion with the sheriff, he's thinking about it, he would love to have it. Okay, uh.
Before you, before you get past that, you're good. Uh, I'm good with having that discussion, but I mean, we're, and I'm just being really upfront, I'm not trying to be blunt, I'm just being upfront, we're still trying to get officers hired with the extra TDC funds they got, so we can have, you know what I mean, actually have officers.
Okay.
So, I mean, how is putting it under the sheriff gonna help our staffing issues?
We hadn't got that forward with the discussion, Commissioner, but he did say, he talked about it.
Yeah, I mean, I know it would take it off our plate, but that don't mean there wouldn't be staffing issues, and, and the last thing I wanna do, and the reason I say it is not to shine up anything, I'm not trying to pass the buck, if you will, to somebody else and give them the issues we're just trying to shed.
Right.
If you understand what I'm saying.
I, I do.
So, if it, if it could be stable and it could be done, then yeah, I'm good with So if it, if it could be stable and it could be done, then yeah, I'm good with having that discussion, we'll see what we can do, but I'm not just trying to pass it off to the sheriff and give him another thing to deal with, is what I'm saying.
Right, I understand. Okay. As you see on the report, the tournament, uh, AU went undefeated in the district, and they move on to state, which is held, was held on the twenty-eighth of June. And, um, I just got a report this morning on how they fared out in the, in the, um, state. So it's, this is what it got, fought hard all weekend, winning our first game against Home County on Saturday morning, took a nail by the lost Sunday against Brookville, losing out the state tournament Monday morning against Weewalsh, so that put us out yesterday. Okay? And the next one on this, landfill fire, I don't know if all of you know that I had it, we had a landfill fire, uh, on the tenth of June. The fire was caused by incinerator that caught debris that was staged close by the embers. So we was able to contain the fire with the help of East Point Fire Department and the Forest Department. And also later on, a couple days later, we asked Coastline to come in, and they helped us out, and they dispersed about, uh, thirty thousand gallons of water. So the fire's completely out now, and DEP was notified.
Mr. Davis, do we have a, do we have a hydrant anywhere close to y'all's facility down there?
No, sir, we do not.
Mr. Morales, who are you in here, is it? We need to do something about that. They, those kind of facilities, I was not aware that they didn't have a hydrant, but in talking to the chief afterwards, they were actually going down the road a piece to fill up for the water when they were fighting the fire. And that, that's, it's by law, I think it's supposed to be every certain distance, maybe it's fifteen hundred feet in residential areas, and I know this isn't residential, but, uh, you know, we need to check and see whether we take that actually out of fire hydrant. And I know that'd be East Point Water and Sewer, but anyway.
Yeah. And, and also, within, we spoke to, uh, ample enough water in the landfill, uh, to come in, we just had the regular two inch. So I did look on trying to, uh, see what a, a water truck would cost, so if the fire, the hydrant can, cannot come to us, we maybe a fight, a water truck would be something we need to.
We got to do something, that's for sure.
Yes.
Yeah, that could be mad.
Anything else, sir?
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Anyone have anything for Mr. Davis?
Thank you for all you do, Fonda.
Yes, ma'am.
You do a lot.
Right.
I, I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If no other commissioner has anything. Uh, same page, page twenty-eight, actually, actually, the item before, uh, item number two, the board is aware, as Mr. Davis just discussed, the Franklin County Dixie U All-Star AU Division, they traveled to play in the board state tournament on June twenty-eighth. County, county policy allows for each team to receive up to twenty-five hundred dollars to assist with travel and accommodation expenses. Since the request was between your regular meetings, uh, each commission was contacted for approval with the understanding that that ratification would take place at this meeting. So board action to ratify the manual twenty-five hundred dollar check approval for the All-Star AU Division team to travel to the state tournament, and this will be from the Parks and Rec budget.
So move.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, Michael?
No, sir.
I'll ask a question. Our policy isn't up to an amount, is it? It's the amount, right?
Yeah, it, it, I think it's the amount, but, you know, I, maybe I should have put up to, but yeah.
No, no, you're good. Well, I know that, uh, in the past, and I think definitely when the policy was written, most all traveling was always down to Sebring. Didn't have anything in the next town, you know what I mean? So I think that's why they didn't have it up to, they just had a certain amount. But anyway, go ahead, sir.
Yeah. So, uh, back to the discussion too, of, of the employees that's gonna be retiring soon, it's about four of us in solid waste, myself, Albert, uh, Henry Rochelle, and Kevin Shire, I think, probably within the forty, forty-five year. I don't know if y'all noticed, but I did bring Aston Messer, who's, uh, wants to be brought up next, so, uh. In the meantime, I'm gonna be adding some duties on to him to, uh, get him ready when we step out.
Good.
Yes.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Davis? Thank you, sir, we appreciate everything y'all do.
Thank you.
Chairman, Ms. Jennifer Downs has, has asked yesterday that her report, uh, is deferred to the next meeting.
Yes, sir. All right. As always, if you have any questions for the Commissioners, just reach out to her, I'm sure she'd be glad to answer anything she can. I will say, I talked to her yesterday about this major storm down there.
Bear, that's a monster.
It's still too far away to tell, uh, but it is definitely something that's being monitored and they're, you know, if it's already a five, it definitely needs to be taken seriously. Cause it's still got a long way to go, and it hasn't even really gotten into the warm waters that the Gulf have for, if it makes it that far, so. Definitely something to keep our, you know, we just don't have regular hurricanes anymore, do we?
No, we have monsters.
Not since Michael. Uh, most, most of storms have been a three or, or greater.
Yeah, and you know, and you know what, Mr. Chairman? You notice, they did a report the other day, I was reading it somewhere, and they said the water temperature out in the Gulf right now is at August temperature usually, but that, that's what it is. That's what causes your big storms, is the water temperature out there, cause it's reaching in the nineties. And I mean, that, it just feeds them storms like that. But I'm gonna tell you something, you know, Franklin County's been blessed in the past, and we're gonna be blessed in the future, but we need to be very mindful of what we do, of what we allow.
Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate what Commissioner Sanders was saying, I finally got to go fishing, um, and, and we got cannonballs all in the bay. We got this, the shark, shark attacks. I was talking to some guys, and the sharks offshore, it's been awful. And it's June, I mean, we, we're, we're two days into July. All this stuff that we're seeing should be, you know, late July, early August.
That's what I was thinking, saying we got cannonballs.
That's what I said, yeah, they're everywhere. And I, I said, well, everything's about a month and a half early, but, uh, you're exactly right. Don't wait around when in bait fish.
Mr. Polis, you're up next.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good to see you, just have some informational stuff for you this morning at all. See the source reduction there at Flowers' Dig. We, we've been able to dig that ditch up to a certain point, and really didn't have access to the, the rest of the ditch because some of the homeowners, and I made contact with some of them, and we actually have cleaned out all that ditch. And, but other than that, it's just a normal, uh, adult sighting, tramp, cows, and stuff like that, but we did utilize the, the mini excavator. Worked really well.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Polis?
Haven't had a mosquito bite me yet.
Don't worry, they're coming. They're persistent.
I tell you one thing, them yellow flies are still biting.
Have been horrible. Uh, one thing I, I will bring up real quick, if you don't mind, I am having some issues with one of my trucks, the twenty-one oh seven, which is one of the twenty-thirteens. We worked on it yesterday, driver come over and tried to treat out of bluff, he got it about, uh, thirty minutes and it's quit, so I tried to, freedom run a little bit late, I was out messing with that this morning, and, uh, still haven't figured it out, so when I leave here, I'm going back, but I'm having an issue with that truck, so, you know, the sprayers, twenty-thirteens and the sprayers are, are, you know, twenty thirteen, so they're getting old, and of course, I, I put some of that stuff in the budget, but I just want to remind you, if, if something happens, you don't get some calls, they hadn't seen the sprayer, then that's, I'm having some issues, but we're, we're still patching them up.
Do we, is it with the sprayer itself, or with the engine?
Yes, with sprayer itself. This, this issue is.
Okay.
And I do have one truck that Rusty told me, the main seal on the engine on one of the twenty thirteen's is, is actually leaking, so, just mileage, wear and tear.
Probably got a couple of miles on it, right?
Yeah.
A couple hundred thousand maybe?
Right at it.
Well, thank you for updating us with that.
Make sure you keep fluid in that one that's leaking around that main seal, though.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you do. Mr. Eric Lobstrang? Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. I just had informational items for you in my report, and I don't have any action items for you today.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Lobstrang? Mr. Lobstrang, thank you for everything you do on behalf of Franklin County with IFAS, we appreciate it.
Thank you Commissioners, have a good day, and a great holiday.
Yes, sir, Happy Fourth. Ms. Whitney Roundtree? Library Director? Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. We're, uh, in the middle of our summer reading program. Uh, we had a great turnout for our June events, um, some stuff we got coming up in July, we've got a children's musical performer, storytimes, adult and children's crafts, and we're gonna end things with a big tie dye event. And I wanted to let you know that, uh, we kinda tabled stuff with the, um, history room for now because we were in the middle of summer reading, uh, the friends and I, we're gonna get back together in September, and we're gonna start on that project, so I'll keep you updated on that. And then lastly, the libraries will be closed July fourth, and I guess now the fifth, so we'll update all of our notices. And, uh, other than that, it's just pretty much business as usual.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Whitney?
Mr. Chair, I got something.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Roundtree.
Last time I visited, you was having, uh, air conditioning problems, has that been resolved?
For now, everything is, is working. I did have, you know, since we're, um, gonna be taking over the maintenance of the building, I did have the friends send me all of their maintenance bills, pest control, what we've spent on repairing the air conditioners. We do have them scheduled where we have a quarterly maintenance contract, AirCon comes and changes the filters and checks everything, so that's, um, that's been really good for preventative maintenance, so, um, and next time they come, I'm gonna have them evaluate them again and just see where we are on the life of, and this is just the East Point branch. Like I said, Carabelle got brand new units, um, they have three there, and they've all been replaced within the last two years, so Carabelle's fine.
Okay. How is the landscaping and grass cutting going over there?
Everything's good, um, the, we've, uh, you know, we've got rain now, we finally quit watering the sod, uh, over in Carabelle, but it's green, it looks great, um, so far so good. The, uh, one thing that I did wanna, um, approach, uh, during the budget workshops was, um, we currently pay for landscaping, you know, or the friends do, um, for the East Point branch, and it is such a, the grounds are so large, um, when we, when you do, the county does take over the maintenance, I would like to just keep the landscaper and keep that in my budget. I know the road department and Parks and Rec, as we've discussed, they're stretched pretty thin, and, um, this place has to be mowed, especially in the summertime, pretty regularly, every two weeks, or it, it turns into a jungle.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Ms. Roundtree? Ms. Whitney, thank you for everything y'all do.
Thank you. Oh, and, uh, Happy Fourth.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, you too. Mr. Ted Mosteller?
Good morning, Ted Mosteller Airport Manager, Staff. I don't have any action items this morning, uh, all informational. Happy Fourth tomorrow, uh, coming up, and, uh, do you have any questions or discussion that you would like to?
Commissioners, is there anything on the informational items from Mr. Ted's report that you want to discuss this morning, or any questions you have? I will say, I've had several people ask me if we're, uh, done clearing at the airport, and I said, yeah, no, I don't think we're done yet, but we're, we're getting closer.
Correct.
Clearing obstructions and getting stuff out of the way and...
The current project is, uh, coming to an end fairly soon. But if you go out, uh, from the roundabout, you can see all the way across the airport.
Which is, well, it should be.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I got my first, got my first compliment on it, actually. Some people, yeah, you know, I've had the other, but, uh, but, but somebody told me that they, they, and I, I see her routinely riding her bike, exercising, her and her husband, and she said, I come around the roundabout, and it was just beautiful. And I said, can you say that ten more times, please?
At least.
It, it does look good, they've done a good job. Like I said, I've had the other, but that's the first compliment.
Mr. Ted, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve Kersenbaum?
Gonna be real short today, we don't have a lot of stuff to go over, but Michael's gonna bring up a couple things on the computer. The Fourth of July celebration, the Third of July celebration in Apalachicola, everything is all firmed up with the military, I'm speaking to the pilots today, and it was a whole lot of work for what's gonna take about two minutes to go by the waterfront with the two jets, but it's gonna be awesome, and, um, I've been working alongside of John with this because the only way the military could fly was at three P M., and it's a little early for that event, so we've been working hard to try to get it well attended early on. Also, the parade on St. George Island, I've been working real close the past couple days with Captain Hamm, and, uh, I think we've got the situation where it's gonna come off real good. We're looking over all the road closures, where details are gonna move from place to place, and the volunteers, and I hope we could set a precedent and get that parade done in an hour, and not jam up the bridge. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed, and next week, that, that's something, that's what we shared on the, uh, on the internet with the flyby from Tyndall. And, uh, the other part that Michael has is the post that we shared with the, uh, the parade. The parade post, what we did is we put a link in there for more information and the new lineup and traffic procedure, click here, and it gives everybody all the information. So God willing, we shared it on thirty different groups, um, and it's out there, so we hope everything works out. All right, well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that, and hopefully next month, we'll have some good stuff to go over.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you.
Is Ms. Kim?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Ms. Kim Bodine? Career source?
She's not on audio.
She's there.
It's still muted, Ms. Kim.
Sorry about that, I was talking very fast, too. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for your time today. What we brought forward today is an action item. It is our annual budget. You may remember that our budget is required to be approved by our local elected officials, um, annually, and, um, this year, our budget is decreased by almost a million dollars. You, you may not remember, but last year, we also had a budget that was decreased by a million dollars. So the last, the, the last year was pretty tough, we laid off six or seven people, I think it was seven at the final count, and, um, this year, we've had to have a few more layoffs and not fill open positions. It is not due to any of our performance or anything that we've, we've done or haven't done. Um, our budget is based on formula allocations from the federal government that rolled through the state, and so when Florida's economy is doing well, we actually get less money. The main reason the budget is decreased is because we have a couple of larger grants that are ending, um, but then we did also lose, um, a pretty good chunk out of the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act grant funds, and those are formula allocations based on things like unemployment level, level of poverty, um, those receiving public assistance, and, um, if we're, uh, considered an area that has large areas of high unemployment, which we do not. In fact, um, our region, Bay Gulf and Franklin County, and Richard Williams region, who's the five counties north of us, are the only two regions in the entire state that miss that, um, particular set of funding that is, applies to, um, large areas with high unemployment. So, um, it's just sort of the nature of the beast, when, when things are going really well in Florida, we actually have less money. So things are going very well in Florida, overall, the state lost money as well, um, but we got hit a little bit harder than the state average, which was about eight percent. So, I'm, I'm presenting the budget to you, I will tell you that coming up, there's another issue, um, that the state has, uh, provided a policy for. We've always been asked to spend fifty percent of our W I O A dollars on training, on funding training, and within training, there are a lot of costs, there's costs for case managers, there's costs for books and tuition, there's costs for any test or licensing fees, or uniforms or supportive services they may need while they're attending training. Only some of those things count towards, uh, the training, um, goal of fifty percent. Even though we've been able to get a waiver from the state, as almost every board in Florida does, to thirty-five percent, this year, we're at forty-seven point two percent. We strive very hard to hit that mark. The reason it's difficult is because in addition to training, which is all that we used to do with W I O A dollars, um, we now also have to operate, you know, career centers, job centers, where people can help with unemployment and other kinds of assistance. So these dollars have been stretched further and further, year after year, making it much more difficult to spend half of them on training. And as the pot shrinks, that task becomes even greater, because even though we have less money, we still have leases and other things that we are committed to that we have to pay for. So we do have a plan, um, the plan has been approved by our board, and if you'll indulge me, I have two of my board members there today. Eleanor Mount Simmons is our chairwoman, um, and this is her second year as chair, Eleanor Mount Simmons is our chairwoman, and this is her second year as chair, and also Mr. Mosteller is one of our longstanding board members. He has been with us really since the inception of this board, back in 1995. So I just want to recognize them. They sit with us and work with us as volunteers on these tough issues that we've been going through, just as you have. You supported us so strongly last year during consolidation, but they, they do as well, and I just want to recognize them for the help that they give us and the time, you know, the volunteer time that they give us. But I, if you have any questions about the budget, I'll be happy to answer them, but this is, this is where we are right now. We are working to get grants to, to pump this number up. The state has some funds, so they've earmarked for grants to local regions, however, we don't yet have the information about how to apply for those.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Kim? Ms. Kim, you're not needing an action item from the board today, right? You're just submitting all this stuff?
The, the budget itself has to be approved by the county commission, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so moved to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Crum. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your support once again.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for your, all you do, trying to help people be trained in our community, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's take a recess for just a minute.
Look at you, Commissioner.
Franklin County Commissioner now back in session. The next things on our agenda cannot be started before the times they are posted at 11:00. So, Mr. Moreau, we're going to go to you and if Ms. Griffiths shows up, we'll do your next.
She's underway, Commissioner.
It's all good.
She was working with somebody at the East Point office this morning. Okay, so, page 28, the first item, at July's meeting, the board voted on a list of candidates to fill the two vacant seats on TDC. After the votes were tallied, Mrs. Donnie Gay received a higher score and was appointed to one of the vacant seats. Ms. Michelle McPherson and Ms. Amy Hotson, they were tied with the second highest scores. The board decided to vote this morning with only these two candidates on the ballot to determine which candidate will be appointed to the vacant seat. You each have a ballot with both names for scoring. Once the vote is completed, Ms. Griffiths will total the scores and provide a tally sheet to your review and consideration. I'm just repeating this as this is the way we did it the last time, but, Mr. Chairman, it's, you know.
Yeah, well, let me ask you a question, Michael. So, just from talking to some people, some people's had heartburn with the way we did it.
Uh-huh.
Not that we were point blank period, we weren't trying to do anything that wasn't above board. We had seven different applicants, we're trying to pick two, five people voting, and one of them wasn't actually going to be at the meeting.
Yeah.
So, that's why we did what we did.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm fine with using this ballot today, I'm also fine with doing a voice vote, I'm fine with doing a ballot and putting our names on it, and I also would like for you to post the last ballots with our names on them, so people won't have any issues with that. Because it wasn't, it wasn't done to try to, you know, be something.
No, well-
We had, we had to make a motion and vote.
Yes, so-
To approve what we did.
Yes, sir, and Commissioner, know that if, again, just like how we did the consultants, where we did a voice vote, we get, that's fine, because there was three consultants, there are only two here today, actually, I would prefer we do that way, it's simpler. The last time, we, we did it, because, keep in mind, if we had done the voice vote and there were two of you that voted for one, and the other three commissioners voted for each a different person, two votes would have gotten it in, and to me, it wasn't, I want to say this, I was trying to make sure we do it in a way that makes it as a level playing field for all the candidates that were on the ballot.
That's right.
So, we all know, when it comes to scoring and points, averages make a big difference.
They do.
So, that's why we did it the last way, but, yeah, Commissioner, there's, we try to do it as best as we can to be as, you know, as open and transparent as we can.
That's right.
So, this morning, yes, that's a simple way, it worked for me, to be very honest with you, and we move forward and I'll fix whatever the complaints were for the last one.
Are the rest of y'all okay with that?
Looks fine, I believe.
I'm not trying to just make it about what I want, but I've just, but again, after today, you can go ahead and post who voted what last time.
Not a problem, sir. Okay, so I can do it like how we did the consultants. I'll start at this end of the table, if Commissioner Ward doesn't mind, you have two candidates, would you, for the vacancy, which candidate would you rank number one?
Amy Hotson.
Okay, Commissioner, your Commissioner Ward, your Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Sanders.
Number one.
Yeah, who would you?
Michelle McPherson.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Amy Hotson.
Okay, Commissioner Amison?
Um, Amy Hotson.
Commissioner Kroom Jr.?
Amy Hotson.
All right, so we have a four to one vote, just as we did with the consultant. Mr. Chairman, I guess if the board agrees, we can call for a motion, and I'll just record it as such.
Yep.
So moved.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison and Commissioner Sanders, all in favor.
Ah.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, easy peasy, we did number two, we did number two.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say one thing real quick.
Yep, go ahead.
I do want, I want to say that we had a lot of great applicants, and everybody was very qualified, if not more. It was a difficult choice for me to determine who I was going to choose, so I think that's good. But moving forward, and I know that we talked about this before, but on the TDC website, we need to know when these other seats come up and become available, so that we can do this process accordingly, so-
Yes.
You know, who, and, and I'd like to know too, like, who represents what, so for example, when Ms. Hotson goes on the website, or Mr. Danny Gay, Donnie Gay, excuse me, goes on the website, they, we know who, what they represent as per, as per the Florida statute, so like, they're not collector of the tax.
Collector of the tax, yes, ma'am.
And then when their term is due, so that we know and can prepare to vote or put in somebody into that seat, so that's not as a complete repetitive thing.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to make a note for that, to make sure that we know, and anybody too, just for transparency purposes, anybody goes to TDC website, they could say, all right, Ms. Amy Hotson was elected in 2024, her term is, because I don't even know if it is, are they two-year, four-year terms, I mean, because I know they're different, right? It's confusing, so-
Can I see, yeah, I'll check on it later.
Yeah, but that's my whole point, it's like-
It proves your point, yes.
It, I, I think it needs to be more transparent, it's not against TDC, it's not against anybody that does the website, it's nothing against John Solomon, nothing against anybody, I just want to be able to know and for the public to be aware, if they go to that website, they know what's what, who's who, and all that.
Fair enough, I'll talk to Mrs. Solomon, Commissioner.
So, they are all listed, and they are all listed with what seat they're in, as far as collector of the tax, or at-large, or, but it does need to be updated, because it still shows Chamber of Commerce, and as, as they're updating, as the Commissioner said, it would be helpful if it showed when their term would be expired.
Okay.
So, so the general public will know, you know, anybody who wants to know about it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, with the way that was, the vote was handled last time, what was the general complaint of it?
That they, that we voted anonymously, and that, that wasn't what we were, the outcome we were trying to do, we just, you know what I mean, it was just an oversight, you know what I mean, it wasn't anybody trying to do anything bad. The only thing, like Mr. Moreau said, we were talking about it, so we get to have a way where it's a clear number one and a clear number two as much as possible, you know what I'm saying? Because if you go down this, and you do it one time, where we all see our number one, then we all see our number two, well then you got six people, they're number one, you know what I mean, it's, it was just confusing, so, and scoring it was a better way.
Yeah.
You know.
And it was.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we would have had a scoring team.
Yeah.
Same people would have been complaining, well, who picked the team?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And who did this? So, we tried to figure out the, the best way that we as commissioners could make that decision in the fairest way.
Yep.
And that's the way we came up with it, with nothing under the table, with nothing trying to hide or be elusive. As a matter of fact, I don't believe any of the candidates or the applicants actually had any issue with it at all, a lot of this back blows coming from other areas, so.
It is.
Yeah.
It is, but I will say, before we go on, it was really like splitting hairs. I, I agree with Commissioner Shaw saying, there were some really qualified people.
Yes.
And this is volunteer boards, very important, it, it was, it was not an easy decision just to decide names, and this is what I, you know what I mean?
And it was countywide, and you had represented from, yes, I, I, that was, you guys did a very good job.
I hope it's, I hope it's a sign of things to come, because it's-
Yes.
It's been a long time since we put Amy in the position out and had seven applicants. Let me just put it that way.
Yeah, that's something I was about to say, just the participation in it along, and, and one, one last thing with it, and I'm, I know I'm beating a dead horse, but this is the one tax that people should be knocking on, our residents should be knocking on the door saying, we need to get behind that, we need to support this, because it's the one tax that does not affect the citizens of Franklin County. And the biggest thing about it is, is, is I don't like government, but if, but you've got to have government, and the best way to have government is a transparent government, and that's, that's been my whole kind of thing I've been leaning towards, and Commissioner Ward did a lot better justice than I can, but transparency is key, and, and that's what will promote more support for the TDC and for TDT itself, so.
Go ahead.
Transparency and education, yes, sir. Okay, so we can go straight to item four on page 29. During previous meetings, the board discussed closing the account that was created with the donated funds to assist survivors of what was referred to as the East Point Fire. Capital Area Community Action Agency, as the county's ESF-15, manages that account. Commissioner Ward was able to get a contractor, because we had conversations about this, I should be more clear, to do maintenance on the ditches located on Buck Road. As you all know, Buck Road received most of the damage from that fire. The contractor submitted an invoice for the maintenance work. Board action needed to authorize Capital Area Community Action Agency to pay this invoice and to close out that account. And Commissioner Ward, I kind of said this, I know we talked about it, that you inspected the work, tell me I didn't say something that I thought we had a conversation on and we didn't have a conversation on.
No, no, I went out and looked at it, and they did a good job, and just so the public is aware, Mr. Chairman, this was funds that we were getting charged to keep this account open.
Yep.
And we were about to run out of money, and there was, there was a little bit of money left, there was nothing that anybody, wasn't enough money to build a house, everybody had already had their homes, everybody had already from the fire had gotten their, whatever they needed, this was just a little bit of money left over, and, and the reason why Buck was chosen over some others, which, there really wasn't any others to choose from, because Buck's a private road, but these funds were donated funds, they were not tax dollars, and so this was the only thing that we felt like would, would be a good use of the monies, so that's why I chose that, and then when they did the, the, the fire, when they had the fire, the forestry did their fire line to prevent the fire from spreading, and it really caused issues with the drainage on, on that street.
Sure enough.
And it, it's really bad, there were reports of, you know, ambulance not getting down to the end of the road to a special needs child, and we all know the history with, with that, that road, so that's why I chose this, that's why we did it, and it took money out of the account that we were being charged, and I wanted to make use of the money instead of just continue to dwindle down to nothing, so that's why we, we did that. I just want the public to be aware of that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question over that? Just so I can familiarize myself with Buck Road. Buck Road, um, did they, did the, did the residents have to sign an easement to allow that to happen?
No.
No.
No, the easement's actually tied to a piece of property that still belongs to the people that were selling the property.
Okay.
Did it develop, yes.
Yep.
You're so right.
And I, and I checked with most of the residents, there's not many residents that live down that road, but they, they were, of course, all in favor of it, because they have drainage issues that's causing issues on their property, and their yard's full of water, so I think this kind of helped, helped mitigate that a little bit, so, so as long as, I'll go ahead and make a motion to authorize Capital Area to pay this invoice and close that fund.
So, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Kroom. Any discussion? I will say in the discussion, I'm, I'm 100% in agreement with what, what we had done, Commissioner Ward, I'm like you, I don't think we need to let that money sit in the account and keep paying a fee just to watch over the money and nothing's happening for the residents, and the bigger thing is, talking to some of them, so, yeah, they come in and did their fire breaks, which was good to try to stop the fire, but those residents had to straighten all that out on their own personal property, but then they're dealing with it on the road that goes to their house.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm good with it completely. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
Yes. All right, Commissioners, item number five, your supervisor of elections requested your assistance with a polling location. The Willoughby R. Marx American Legion Hall Post 106, if I said that correct, Commissioner Amison, located at 801 US 98 in Appalachia Cola, is without HVAC. Currently, the members of that post are unable to replace the unit. The supervisor election is asking the board to assist with replacing the HVAC unit, as this has been a longstanding Franklin County polling location, and primary is right around the corner in August. The American Legion Hall, oh, I'm sorry, the staff received three quotes with the lowest quarter $5,719.95. The American Legion Hall is considered a nonprofit, board contributes to other nonprofits annually. Board action to approve the purchase of the HVAC unit system, it's $5,719.95 for the Willoughby R. Marx American Legion Hall Post 106.
So moved.
Second, Congress. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Kroom. Please proceed, Mr. Kroom.
Would this come out of the supervisor budget or our budget?
It will actually come from some of the board's capital funds. Yep, we did actually budget some capital outlay for the supervisor of elections, actually on our side, this, in the current year, and likely it will be from that same line item.
Any more discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, further.
I was just trying to get this up there. As the board is aware, I've been working with Court Administration and Doug Shuler, who's the architect, the project for the county, to renovate that jury box right over there where Royce is sitting at, and the, where the chairman is sitting at, the county's judge's seat, here, your meeting room. At some point, county activity, county court activities will move back to this room. Attaches a rendering, I was trying to pull up there for the public to see, a rendering for your review and comments. If you have no objections to the proposed changes, the next step will be to discuss this, the budget for this project, with the clerk and her finance office. Final plans will be brought to you and the county judge for approval. So, if you give me a second, let me see if I can share this one up, so we can all be looking at the same thing, we're talking about the same thing here, I think the picture's... I noticed on the agenda package for the board and the public, but let's see here. Let's work on this right here. All right, don't ask me how they did this picture, where they got it from, I'm not quite sure, but-
3D rendering, got a question.
Sign, sign.
Yes, sir.
So, on the, the judge's bench, it's going to be, platform's going to be-
Yes, so where, approximately where the chairman is sitting right now, that will be elevated, and, and there will be a platform built, it'll be elevated, and there will be something up front to show that it's higher, that's where the county judge is, is sitting. So, if this is done, Commissioner Sanders, if this is done, the chairman will be sitting in the judge's seat and will be-
I don't like that.
Elevated, and there'll be a monitor buried in the desk there, that's why they have to elevate it, for the monitor buried in the desk, for the judge to have court.
Mr. Chairman, that's fine for the judge, but we on this board are all equal, and to have the president, the chairman sitting higher than myself and Commissioner Ward, or Commissioner Amison and Commissioner Kroom, I don't think that sends a good message in my mind, but, I mean, I'm only one thing.
No, I hear you, what, we have to figure something out, because the problem with the county judge is that he has to sit on that high stool, and it's a long day, and it hurts his, his back.
Hurts his back.
And across the street at the big courtroom, they're starting to, the circuit judge, you know, he wants to have court, because there's still a lot of catching up to do from COVID, correct? So, he wants to have more court, but he's not able to, because he has to share it with the county judge for now, so that's why we try our best to fix this situation.
My only thing, Michael, is, uh, looking from a safety perspective-
Mm-hmm.
-of, of the risen platform, need to be adequate space for that chair, because I don't want whoever to roll off, since we do have rolling bells, so that's why.
It's got the chair, it's got elevated on the ground behind it, too.
I just don't, that's from safety perspect, perspective, that's what I look at a lot.
I'll talk to, uh, Mr. Uh-
Because there's hardly any room back here anyway.
Back here, Shuler, yes, and I'll tell you, the reason is being, we had a, a bigger plan, but it's a lot more expensive, what was, what we're originally going to do, Commissioners, let me explain and go back, give some history, we're going to create more of a, of a horseshoe, a round table, push this forward, put this platform in the back behind this desk, and push everything back about two, three, probably three rows. This is two rows, probably about three rows, and move everything forward.
I like that.
What we're going to do, um, to, for, but, that started to get very expensive, and so, um, between the budget and the time, you know, that was, that, we stopped that proceeding and looked for a less expensive project that we can proceed with right now. But if the board does not like the platform, we'll take it back to Court Admin and, and the architect, Mr. Doug Shuler, and say, okay, we got to come up with something else.
Let, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, let me ask you a question. Is there any place that we can put this sound box that-
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Beside right here?
Yes, so to answer your question, they have ordered a brand new sound system for this courtroom that's in a warehouse, and what they're waiting for is that when, when they do that install, it's, it's one big project to make the changes, because I think installation, and that could run anywhere from about $15,000 of the, of the sound system, because there's a lot of new cabling, wiring, and installation, so yes, but that, in fact, that box, and when you go in that room, Commissioner Sanders, you see there's a little, another back, all that will go in the back room, where we have all the internet connections, the phone connections, and everything else, so there is a plan to move that. And this sound system has been here since this building has been, right, Commissioner? Yeah, I don't think anything has changed, yes.
Just one last thing for me, on the sketch that you have right here.
Yes.
The one that showed the two, two different sketches of the courtroom?
Oh, yes. This.
Yeah, so I'm assuming the top one is the current?
Yes.
Okay, so the jury will be in single file, left to right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, so the jury box-
Will they have to extend it any?
Yes, it'll be extended at least a row, or maybe a row and a half, going that way.
That one, okay.
So, you lose the two front rows of the room that we have right now.
Got you.
And, let me, okay, so I'm going to say this, because it's been said at our meetings, the big problem here is, it's very uncommon, seeing this, they said for this district, this region, that a county commission and a county judge shares the same room, that's the problem. I mean, for them, it is, because that's not something they have, I'm, I'm not as familiar with Liberty County, but I don't think they share the same room, I'm not sure.
Liberty County sits in front of the, up there at Liberty County Commission, the Liberty County Commission sits in front of the judge's podium.
Oh, okay.
They sitting down on there. But see, this is from Article Five funding back in the early days, it's how we got it, this building cost $1 million.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and everything, it was courtroom slash commission room, and that's way to go. But, and, and like I said, you got to do what you got to do, but I just, as a judge, you need that sitting up here.
Yeah.
But as a commission, we need to be all on one.
Yeah.
And that's just my perception, but I'm, like I said, I'm only one thing, so.
Well, that's why we're here, to, to discuss it.
But that's the way I, you know, I just, I don't, I don't like to come into a room and have the chairman of the board sitting up here, and then you have the commissioners down here, like, it's just the perception that you get, and that, I mean, that's it, that's the way I feel, but I understand the judge needs something, because that chair, I wouldn't be able to sit in it 10 minutes, where he sits on.
It's a killer.
And I think that, that puts things still back there, too.
Put still, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is number one, to accommodate the judge.
Oh.
Pretty much, but I, I like the idea of pushing it out that way, but the thing about it is, if you move that box back there, we're going to be able to access this whole thing then.
We can get some, we can get some books, let go, Judge Shuler sit on some books.
I know, I know.
I know that Judge Shuler wants to work with the board, he's, he's not pushing one with the other.
I know.
He wants us all to find a happy medium of what we do, so I don't want you guys to think, oh, this is all because of the county judge, absolutely not, you know, this is, this is Court Admin, actually, that, saying that we, we have to figure, figure something out, so, again, we could go back to the drawing board, and I'll express your, your, the, the board's issues, I mean, I've, I've heard from Commissioner Sanders, I've-
Let me ask you a question.
Her Commissioner Kroom.
I'm not trying to complicate, let me ask you a question. If you're going to do away with this-
Uh-huh.
Is there a scenario where, look at that picture you have up there, if you take the, that one, the, the right side, if you're sitting out in the audience, it's got a real short section of chairs there, actually, I wish we could do away with the pews and get chairs, but anyway, that's just a personal preference. Would there be accommodations to move some of those tables, so we could actually run this ADA ramp up in front of the jury box and just come straight up? Because it's taking up space with this?
Yes. Yes.
And we could possibly move ours in front of where the judge is and the judge would be behind it all? If that's agreeable to them, you know what I mean? Then we'd have a separate dais for the commission and the judge would be actually behind it and it could be up as high as he wants it to be. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yep. One of the things, I'm glad you mentioned the table. One of the things that was brought up, that these tables are just too big for this room.
Yeah, they are.
It's for the well, it's just, they're like, you know.
But, I mean...
Why and where?
Just if it's possible, because the other thing is that...
That's, that's the idea, Mr. Chairman.
With that elevated, with the way it's elevated in the back, I'm like Commissioner Crum. I think that's a safety issue waiting to happen.
Yeah.
Because if it's a foot or two up, that's, yeah, that's not good.
Yeah. So, okay, I'll bring the concerns back and we'll come up with something else and we'll keep going at it until we find a happy medium, you know, with this situation.
It's all, Michael, it's all about how the public perceives it.
Yes.
You know what I mean? I mean, I've never been, I'm way up here and you way down there. I feel like we're all level, but I like that idea that you got, Mr. Chairman. That may work.
And two, if there's any option where we could actually have the dais actually be curved, where we can actually see each other, I think that would be better.
Yeah, because we all the time doing...
I've said that since I've been here. I mean, I like to look at somebody while I'm talking to them.
Yep.
I get that crank in my neck when I look down there and...
Give everybody a little room.
If everybody remembers during COVID, where we had to move a couple of commissioners down there to get the space. Yeah, they were below, but people enjoyed the face-to-face that they had. So, to try to recreate that with this is what we're working on, but to keep the judge in mind also. Okay, so I'll take the comments back and if you have any other comments after you look at it some more, think about it, let me know. I'll take it back to the architect and to Court Admin and we'll keep going at it.
Okay.
Item seven, if I may move on. Okay, so here's some bittersweet news. Commissioners, so last week I received notice from Mr. Mark Carrington. He's been your county planner for thirty-four, thirty-five years. Don't start a crying. Okay. That his last day with the county will be on Wednesday, July thirty-first. He's retiring. Again, most of you know he's been here for a very long time. Mrs. Griffith and I have been working on some interim solutions to cover his major duties. Ms. Tracy Bosby, your current consultant, well, God blessed us because she is lab certified. So, she can take over the FDOT projects immediately. Erin tells me that she does it for her county or two right now. So, that is great. It happened so at the last, at your last meeting, June eighteenth, the chairman and I already had a meeting set up with ARPC about a planner, you know, trying to get him in place, get ready for when Mr. Carrington, we thought he was gonna leave later this year, early next year. That's Mr. Justin Steele. We had a good meeting then. I got Mark's notice, so Mr. Steele came over a couple of days afterwards. He sat with Mark. Mark thinks this is a good solution. He likes Mr. Steele. They work good together. They're gonna try and work as much as they can during the month of July and we will use Mr. Steele as a planning consultant. I should have an agreement for you for approval at the next meeting. And Mr. Steele actually does that for Liberty County at the moment because apparently Liberty County, their planner left also. And so, he's doing it there, so he's accustomed, he's glad that Mark is, he wished he was here longer, but he's glad he's here for at least the month of July to help with the transition. He wasn't afforded that option in Liberty County. And that is our interim plans. Hopefully, they'll work out to be permanent plans and we'll move forward and do, you know, we'll get it done. And I'll say this publicly, probably at the next meeting, if I can convince Erin to convince Mark to come over, I will have Mark first thing on the agenda and we could thank him for his years of service.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's appropriate. I think it's highly appropriate.
We get a platform and, you know, we can see, I don't think I've ever seen, not even a hint of a tear in Mark's eye. Let's see if we can get that accomplished at two weeks from today, commissioners. Alright, I'll move on. Firenet repairs.
Mike, I'm sorry. Before you do?
Yes.
Commissioners, as you know, there is a PUD plan that has been submitted to the planning department. It's going to be on the P&amp;Z agenda. It's for the landings at St. George Island. I haven't yet had a chance to talk to Mr. Carrington about the latest iteration that has of that plan and the PUD that's going to be proposed. But, I am concerned with, we're not going to have a planner from the beginning to the end of that evaluation process. So, this seems like an appropriate time is to bring that concern to the board, see what your thoughts are, see if the board has any guidance, you know, for me in terms of how to react to this retirement for Mr. Carrington because I do have something of a concern that I'm not going to have a planner from the initial evaluation through planning and zoning and then the eventual public hearing on the PUD ordinance. And my initial thoughts frankly are to, you know, for the board to authorize me to contact a planner, see if they have a conflict of interest first and retain that person to come in and, you know, make the evaluation initially and through the public hearing. But, I mean, certainly no disrespect to Mr. Carrington at all. That's not what I'm thinking. Mark is somebody I have the highest regard for. But, you know, we do have to conduct the county's business and I would be concerned with having one planner start it and then a second planner finish it, so...
Yeah, I don't like that idea. That I have one starting and the other one finishing. I would rather have one the whole way through personally.
Do we need to do something about that or table it or whatever?
Well, I have actually reached out already to the attorney for the landings. Her name is Ms. Erin Tilton. She's with some law firm in Tallahassee. I mean, it's the alphabet soup, you know, Stern, something, something, something. I talked to her initially and we're tentatively scheduled to have a phone conference this afternoon and what I'm discussing with them is the same concern. I'm addressing with y'all publicly. This is just the first chance we've had to talk about it publicly since Mark announced his retirement. I think it was last week sometime.
Yep.
My initial thought is, the last time we had, excuse me, the last time we hired an outside planner, we used a planner that I had recommended to the board. Her name is Alora Gutter Mills, I think her name is. It's when we were sort of looking at the East Point overlay. So, my initial thoughts would be, you know, if the board shares that concern, and it sounds like you do, that I could reach out to Ms. Laura, find out what her availability is and then come back to the board, maybe at the next meeting with a proposal. But, I do think, you know, tabling the application is something that I am going to be discussing with the developer this afternoon and I can give each of you and Mr. Maron an individual report after I have that phone conference because just, it seems to me that, you know, if we can reach an agreement and they understand the situation that we find ourselves in as a county and they agree to voluntarily, you know, pause the application till we can get, you know, a planner on board, that way we give plenty of public notice and that's part of the reason I'm bringing it up now is so the public knows that there's a potential, either an agreement or a recommendation by me to planning and zoning next week to table this matter for the reasons that we've been discussing here this morning, which is Mark's retirement.
So, you're fine with just direction from the board because you have to have these other conversations anyway.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up publicly and receive, I know I've got comments from Commissioner Sanders and the chairman. I mean, not putting any commissioner on the spot, but is there any other direction that the board has? I mean, do y'all, I mean, does the board like the idea of having a planner from the initial evaluation through the end as opposed to having Mr. Carrington's initial evaluation and then some second person coming in later? I mean, I personally am not particularly comfortable with, you know, changing courses in midstream, so...
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that. I don't want too many hands in the pot because then somebody starting out, things get lost in translation in the middle and to the end. So, I concur with the chairman and Commissioner Sanders in that we need to just have one handle it from start to finish.
Okay. And again, please understand, I want to make sure crystal clear. No disrespect intended to Mr. Carrington at all. I like that I hold him. The county has been extremely fortunate to have him work for this small community with all the talent and abilities that he has brought to the table these many decades of loyal service.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, what you gotta think about is there is, that is a potential project that may or may not change the whole landscape of our area. And you've got to have it, you've got the overlay, you've got the St. George Island overlay. It's gotta be considered. You've got everything. So, in order to make sure it's consistent all the way down, to have that planner there at the beginning and have that planner there at the end. And then if there's anything goes wrong, they all know what they did wrong, you know?
Right, yes, I do.
I agree. It's cleaner. It's just cleaner that way. I agree. I agree as well.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Maron. Thank you for allowing me to interrupt your time.
Go ahead, sir.
Yep. Alright, everything else is information items. The firenet repairs, I put that on so that the clerk's finance office has it on my report. They have a record of it because we approved that. That was an eighteen hundred dollar quote. The medical report is there. If you need the, if you need the sheriff here at the next meeting, let me know. He might be here on another matter anyway. So, if you have questions about the medical jail, medical report, your ethics class, you should be hearing from us next week with passwords, usernames to set you up so you can take the ethics class on your tablets at your convenience. Let's see. Attached to FDOT's speed limit reduction notice, it's there for, if you have any questions, let me know. I will call FDOT if you do to figure out, you know, why they did it. If you want to see a copy of their report that caused them to make this change, I can get that for you. And your next meeting date is two weeks from today, on the sixteen.
Mr. Maron, I'd like to see that report with FDOT.
You would?
Where's the Zach area?
By summer camp.
Summer camp. Yes. Like where the paving project is being done. That's probably what, right? Do you think so too, Commissioner? That's probably what inspired that, the paving project they have going on there. I'm sure they did a report and somebody said, yeah, we need to slow this down.
Well, you've had a lot of bad acts.
True, true.
They finally doing something about it.
Yeah, true.
You know?
Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Sanders probably helped me out with this. This is actually three nineteen, or nine, no, that would be three nineteen. Is it gonna be, is it gonna be the three nineteen side that they're reducing down?
I think it's, I think it's the whole thing around that curve right there.
Okay. Oh, that's, that's a long time.
It seems like a permanent...
Length-wise.
Yes, it's in the report. It's in the report and attached that I have on your agenda. Yes. Not on your electronic, look on the electronic, you'll see the report and it'll print out there, the full report. Not the report, Commissioner, the letter. I'm sorry. I'm gonna get a copy of the report for you.
I have something from Mr. Maron. Can I bring it up? We just got talking about the supervisor of elections and the American Legion out there on...
On ninety-eight?
Ninety-eight, yeah. And the air conditioning. Is she set for the election at the garden center, Garden Club over there?
Yes.
And where do we stand on the Garden Club?
With the Garden Club, actually because of the election dates coming up and I explained to you a couple of months ago, once Courtney was out on medical leave, it would be delayed. I have not created, I was working with Lisa Brett's. I want to create that RFP, RFP, qualifications, whichever way, whether ad to get someone in there to do congregate sites. So, people have reached out to me. They're interested, which is good. So, I told them I would let them know once the ad is out there. I'll try my best to get it out. This is one of those months where we have an extra week. I will try my best to get it out this week.
There's not a day that I go to town that somebody don't ask me about it because they miss it and they don't want to go over to the other place. They're not willing to do it.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, and the other thing is, where do we stand on the consultant for the hospital step?
We have a meeting to discuss the engagement letter next week. I have to get with Attorney Shuler to make sure he's clear on that day. There's some concerns on that engagement letter I'd like to discuss with them. Erin, myself, Attorney Shuler, I'll probably wrangle the chairman into this one because I want somebody with more stripes than I do at that meeting because there are a few concerns and I, I'm not comfortable with it and I'd like to discuss it with them. And if we cannot come to an agreement, I'll be coming back to you and say, okay, who's the next firm that you would like us to negotiate with?
Yes, ma'am.
Which one was up next, you know? But, that's where we are. And commissioners, I did not, usually I do. I did not put the item of my report where you guys give an update on FAC. I figured you would do that under Commissioner comments because I know there was a lot going on down there, so...
There was.
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of things for Mr. Maron.
Go ahead.
One is September eighteenth, let me put this mic up a little closer so everybody can hear me, okay? Conference is September eighteenth and nineteenth in Pensacola. I believe that's the innovation, innovative conference that we talk about legislative stuff.
Yeah.
I want to go to that one.
Okay.
But, and this is nothing against any of our county staff by any means. However, it was quite inconvenient, speaking of the conference, to stay at an off-site hotel than have to Uber over every day, sometimes multiple times, back and forth. I know at one point, I just wanted to go back up to the room between classes and just, you know, sit down and relax for a bit, but I couldn't because, and there really wasn't, there's places downstairs you can sit, but it's kind of congested and sometimes I want some time just to myself to just focus on things and quiet, quietness. So, I just want to make sure that the registration is open for this conference. I don't know when the rooms become available to get booked, but I don't know if maybe moving forward, we all need to maybe book, start booking things ourselves if that would take away from the county staff having to worry about it. That way we can make sure we've got, you know, what we need. Like, I don't know, Commissioner Sanders, her knee stuff might have certain criteria. What she might need is in terms of a hotel room, but I don't know.
If it's not enjoyable, I can say...
I'll say this, Commissioner. I don't think that is, commissioners, I don't think that's ever... With the exception of the, what you go to, is it Legislative Day in Tallahassee? With the exception of that, that is, as long as I've been, I've never seen that happen before.
Never had.
And trust me, I hear you guys loud and clear. That won't happen again. There'll be no rebound. I'll try, my intention is not to let that happen again.
I was going to...
I've put...
Say the same thing that Commissioner Ward said.
Yeah.
And I noticed in the past and it's probably, I was wanting to, Ms. Griffith's report to bring it up, but I think when you look into this as well, because my prior jobs I dealt with, same thing. But, we need to look into issuing the board cards, have a tangible card with each name on there. Now, this experience was pleasant. I had no problem with card authorizations. However, I'm big on preventative. That doesn't mean it won't happen the next time. I've seen where it has happened and it's been horrible. So, I don't have to deal with that no more.
We've had a lot of...
So, we have enough of time to maybe talk to Ms. Phillips and get that ball rolling where we can have each commissioner have a tangible card with their name on it.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that, I don't know if cards, and no disrespect, Commissioner Crum, but the cards, I don't know if that might be a difficult thing for our finance office to try to achieve because then they'd have to change the name of the card every four years if one of us, you know, gets out of office or whatever. But, I don't know if it would be easier to just do it on our own personal card and then get reimbursed. I don't know if that would be easier. I don't know how that works auditing-wise with the clerk's office because I know that's kind of... I will say that we, Chairman Jones and I have, had stayed, when we went to Tampa at the Innovative Conference last year, we had to stay at a different hotel and we both had trouble. We were calling you and Courtney at five o'clock that day and I just wanted to go to the room and use the bathroom for me because I'd been on the road for five hours. But, and it's, again, nothing against county staff. I just think that moving forward, and I don't know when they open those rooms for the block rooms open, and I know there's probably a short window and only a few rooms that are allowed. But, I know me personally, you know, I had my husband with me and we had a lot of, the other commissioners had their families with them and it was just inconvenient. And I'm not, I was blessed to have a place to stay. Don't get me wrong. And the hotel that we did have was nice. I'm not disputing that. But, I just, future-wise, as Commissioner Crum said, preventative, I don't want to have any more issues.
See, I'm, I don't like to co-mingle funds if it's, I want to give one card and it's the county card. I don't believe in that. I did it with the state. I did it with school. I even put, go an extra mile and put a card in a different location so I won't accidentally pull it.
Yeah.
So, I believe, I feel that we need a card.
Yeah. But, two things, commissioners. So, one, yes, again, I have safeguards in place to try my best to make sure this doesn't happen again where you're not staying at the hotel where the conference is. That's one thing. Now, Commissioner Crum, you're absolutely... Now, Commissioner Crum, you're, you're absolutely right. We have had some, we have had times where I know the Commissioners went to the same hotel maybe every other year or something. One year is the easiest check-in, you walk in, okay? Other times, it's like you guys are calling me because, you know, they, they can't locate the, the credit card authorization.
Taxing them.
Taxing them. And like, we send packages to them all the time. So that, Commissioner Crum, is hit and miss. And I, I will talk to the clerk, sit down with the Finance Director and, and Aaron and see what we could work out to try to minimize that as best as we possibly can. You know, because I cannot, like, there's no check-in situation I can guarantee at any time.
I've dealt with check-out. Like this last conference I went to at school. So it, it was like two dozens of them had issues because they did not have the tangible card. I was like, well, I had no issue, I had my card right here. But it was, it was horrible.
Well, and, and too, I talked to, um, VAC staff. And they're, we're not going to be staying in, I mean, they're not going to do the conference in the Bonnet Creek next year.
No, it's different.
It's gonna be a totally different hotel.
Okay.
They'll do it for like a couple of years and then they'll change.
So another one, okay.
So we don't know, so you've got to stay up on top of it because as soon as they say rooms are open, get it in that, the minute you see it. Because if not, you don't get it.
That's how we usually do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To address the question of when motel registration opens, a couple of years ago, it's my understanding that the system was changed so that once you register for the conference, then you can book your rooms. Usually you could just book your room and get the, the reduced rate before you register. But I think now, unless they've changed it back, it's registration for the conference, which then opens the portal to book the room.
That's the way it is.
And that's more for Mr. Morone's timing. Because you, you said that registration's already open for September.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure Mr. Morone knew that.
We're working this next week.
And not to discredit anything Commissioner Ward said about the turnover rate every four years. But, you know, when, with the state, we had agents, we had two hundred agents and the turnover rate was very high. And I feel like if they can do it and make it work, I feel like we can do it. Clerk, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, my board said it, but I would like for everybody to sit down. So maybe if you could come up with some kind of policy or a plan before you make any kind of decisions on it. Because I would like to get.
We would have to amend our policy to be able to.
Right, right, right. So, you know, I'd like to get Ms. Phillips' input on it as well. So if we could just set up a meeting, we could all come to an agreement, maybe, you know, amend the policy or whatever.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not a, it's not as easy as you think. So I've had a, a couple of years ago, when I was going to the Legislative Day in Tallahassee, it was three years ago now. I, I showed up from my hotel eleven o'clock at night because I worked all day and then just drove up there afterwards. And they said, no, you don't have a room here. I said, well, I got the paperwork for it. They said, no, you don't have a room. It's because it was eleven o'clock.
Yeah, I remember that.
You know what I mean? So I had to go find a room in the middle of the night. And if I hadn't had the county card, I would not have done that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But I actually had told Morone, look, I'm going, I need that card.
Yeah.
Because the very first conference I went to, at the end of the conference, they charged everything to my card that I gave them for incidentals. And I had to try to, we had to try to straighten out with the county to get all that back. You know what I mean? So now, if I'm going, I'm going to make sure I have the county card for, for all of us. But that's the one that's going on for incidentals, it's not going to be mine because I paid the whole bill before.
Right.
Yeah.
You know? Yes, there's got to be a way to make it work.
I've had the issue that we had at school as well, so to get all the red card's cards.
Yeah.
We had that same issue.
I wish you all could use the influence of FAC. And once we register, they book the rooms. And they just bill us, but that's not gonna happen.
That's not gonna happen.
I, I know.
They're not gonna do that work.
And one of the things, the one of the things that went on with us this year.
Thank you.
One of the things that went on this year, they had, um, I don't know if it was Platinum Dance or any, but they had dance.
Yes, they have a competition there at some point.
Dance competition. So they had little girls and all friends thing. But anyway, it, it was good to see that. But this is the first time that's ever happened to me, I know.
It, it is. I remember Commissioner Ward, oh goodness, where she went to Tallahassee the first time.
Oh, Lord.
There. Was it a nightclub?
It was a nightmare.
There was something there at three in the morning, the bass is pounding.
They were also having an FSU Duke basketball game that night.
Oh.
So they were loaded.
They were, they were.
Yeah, everybody was still partying because FSU actually beat Duke. So that was, that was what was going on.
That was a nightmare.
Actually, with the dance banquet, no, or con, whatever it was, convention. That's why I told some of that, there was a few young ladies that were obviously dancing and their parents were there. I said, well, you got the reigning state champion dancers over here. And they all looked and I said, that's all politicians. I said, they can dance too, trust me.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one more thing too from Mr. Morone.
Yes.
As a, someone whose employer, not Franklin County, but my other employer had the cybersecurity incident. I feel like it's important, and a lot of, uh, some of the classes and other Commissioners down south at this conference were discussing cybersecurity. It's a big thing now. And I just want to make sure moving forward that our county is safe, that we are secure with our internet, with our, of our information online, in addition to the hospital, know what we need to do about getting their cybersecurity hammed up to where they don't have a cybersecurity incident, where they get attacked and have malware and.
Ransomware.
Ransomware, whatever you want to call it. I, I just want to make sure that they don't have to deal with what I had to deal with at my, my job. It was horrible, it was a nightmare. There were concerns of our personal information because, you know, our social security numbers, all this stuff's on, anybody can go in and get it because it's, we have to have it on there. And just, I want to make sure that our county employees, that our county residents and our hospital and all is safe from anything that may potentially happen. Because it's, it's a thing now.
It is.
And I'm in the wrong line of work, we should all become, because that's what they're doing, eating their Doritos and drinking their Mountain Dew and saying, who am I gonna get today? And they're getting paid millions of dollars to, to, to release it, basically to give you back your systems. And it's a big thing now, we need to make sure that we're safe.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, with that, actually I'd spoke with Mr. Morone before the meeting. Last night, one of my oldest son's college roommates was in town. And this topic came up at basically the dinner table, or the dinner bar, let's put it that way. But, um, his fiancee works with Ascension in Tennessee. So him and my wife went to talking about, because she, I've had to live with the fact that y'all been living in the Stone Age for two months, doing handwritten stuff and all that. But the, the topic that got brought up, and, and Yanni was, you know, basically going through the technical side of it. And with the ransom things. And he said, you know, you, you take your financial institutions, stuff like that, they have the backbone to pay for constant protection, cyber protection. You know, and that's what got my wheels turning because what happened, obviously Ascension is a bigger, you know, is, is, is national. And, you know, they, they got hacked. Now, you roll around to our, our little hospital wings, you know, obviously we can't afford to have that type of security. But what we, what we really need to do too, and, and Michael's going to check in on it, is make sure that we have insurance in place for that. Because that's really all it is, it's, it's, you know.
They just want their money.
It's, it's an insurance grab. But that, but that, that would really be the only way we could protect our, you know, stuff. Because we can't afford to have that type of firewalls placed. And some people just sit there monitoring constantly. You know, Chase Financial probably can, but Franklin County can't. But, uh, but, but we can check into it, see if we have some insurance in place that way. Especially with a hospital where you have such sensitive information, you know, it doesn't open us up for a potential lawsuit down the road or something, so.
Well, it's just, Mr. Chairman, it's a safety thing too. Just to give an example, at the hospital, if you've got someone come in that can't speak for themselves, the first thing you do is you look up at the computer to see what they're allergic to. You don't want to give any, obviously, patient any medicine they're allergic to. And by pulling up on the computer, you have everything there. Well, like Commissioner Amerson in the Stone Ages, you can't go pull that medical record from medical records office in a emergent situation. So it's, it's really just a safety issue too, not only for people, just in general, with their information, private information. I know Ascension is offering a protection for their employees now because they're afraid that with that ransomware attack, some of our personal, private, confidential information got out and, you know, for our identities to be stolen and such. It's, it's a big thing and it's a scary thing. And it's a thing that we never really, twenty years ago, had to talk about or think about, or even five years ago, ten years ago. But now it's the thing. And so we just, again, as we move forward, our, our countywide thing, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're cognizant of that.
Yes. And this, it, it's happened to us. I mean, we was locked out for a month. And this is the agency I was with that, you know, general revenue would collect two point four billion dollars a year. And they got us. So it, it does happen.
Happened to anybody.
Anything else for Mr. Morone? Attorney Schuler, let's go back to our public hearings. We had one scheduled eleven.
All right, sir. May I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
All right, Commissioner, speaking of countywide, this is a public hearing on a countywide, or a proposed countywide ordinance for creation of no parking zones. Read the title of the proposed ordinance. It's an ordinance to Franklin County, Florida prohibiting the parking of motor vehicles, campers, water vessels, and trailers on the public streets and public property designated as no parking areas in unincorporated Franklin County, providing for towing at the owner's expense, providing for immobilization devices and associated expenses, providing for additional non-criminal and criminal penalties, providing for several ability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. In section one of the proposed ordinance, it authorizes the establishment of no parking areas as designated by the county commission. And it creates a prohibition that if any, if there's a no parking sign and you park there, then that activity is prohibited and would subject the, the person in violation of the no parking area to the penalties provided for this, provided by, in this ordinance. Section two authorizes signage to be posted for the no parking areas. Section three creates a category of penalties which includes towing. It also provides, in addition to towing and removal, that any person who violates this section for the first time shall also be guilty of a non-criminal violation as defined in Florida statutes and shall pay a fine, or Florida statute seven seven five point zero eight, and shall pay a fine of one hundred and eight dollars. Any person who violates this section a second time or who violated the provisions hereof in such a manner that the violation causes or contributes to any injury to person or property shall be guilty of a second degree misdemeanor, all of which will be enforced in accordance with the laws of the state of Florida. And they shall also pay a fine of one hundred and eight dollars. Section four authorizes the immobilization devices as approved by this board of county commissioners. The ordinance itself may be enforced by any duly sworn law enforcement officer, including the Franklin County Sheriff. Section six provides a number of definitions, which I will might read into the record. But it provides definitions of campers, motor vehicles, no parking area, what it means to park or parking. It defines trailers and it defines the, the meaning of the word unattended. And also provides a definition for water vessels. And if the board adopts this ordinance as it has been drafted and presented to you, it would go into effect upon execution by the, the chairman and the clerk and being recorded with the state of Florida. So unless the Commissioners have any questions for me regarding this ordinance, it would be appropriate to call for public comment.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Attorney Schuler?
Ju- just one, and I'm, I'm trying to run back through it. Is there any exemptions for like a, an emergency?
No.
Okay.
I would allow the discretion of the officer in the field if there's a true emergency.
All right.
Ask you a question about section four. So we don't currently have any authorized immobilization devices? But this is just adding a provision to this potential ordinance where if we do undertake that in the future, then we can just add it to it and just amend this ordinance, is that what you're?
No, you do not amend, it would be by resolution of the board, you don't have to amend the ordinance. But I, I added that to this, but we already have a parking ordinance. But it's just for Alligator Point. This essentially makes that ordinance for no parking at Alligator Point, a countywide no parking ordinance. And I know we've been in negotiations with one provider named Barnacle to possibly provide, if you remember that windshield immobilization, where there's still some issues with that proposed contract that have not yet been finalized. I've just, until the board adopted this ordinance, I've just put negotiations with Barnacle on pause. But I figured if you're, the board chooses to use some form of an immobilization device, then it should be authorized by ordinance.
Okay. Any other Commissioners have any questions? Or Attorney Schuler? All right, this time we'll look for public comment. Is there one in the room that wishes to comment about this publicly before we proceed? Anyone at all? Mr. Morone, would you check Zoom, please?
Anyone attending by Zoom would like to comment on this, this public hearing? I'm sorry, indicate by raising your hand on your device. Chairman, no hands raised.
Okay. Back to the Commission, do we have any questions or what is the pleasure of the board? Yes, low, table.
I mean, I so moved to accept this.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, may I move on to the second public hearing?
Please.
All right, Commissioners, we have discussed the issue of docks as an allowable accessory use that could be installed and used prior to the construction of a principal use on a piece of property. That discussion's been held several times. The board had authorized and directed me to schedule a public hearing for the purpose of considering the removal of docks, which could, which, if you remove docks as an exemption to the accessory use standard, that means that docks could not be built until there is a principal use that has been constructed and, and used on the property. For example, if it's R1 residential, until you build your house, you do not get a dock. If the board were to adopt this ordinance as it's currently written, subsequent to the time the board authorized this public hearing, there's been some discussion that's evolved from the pool house and other accessory uses such as swimming pools. So does the board want to move forward with this public hearing? Or does the board want to table this or cancel the public hearing and consider it as part of a broader potential amendment to the zoning code regarding accessory uses?
So I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I, I'm fine with having the discussion about the other things you, you have. Because what's come, what's become clear is in our zoning code, we don't have, so we use the word secondary and accessory kind of interchangeably. And that's, I think, got us into a little bit of an issue. The only issue I've ever had with docks, they are currently in exemption, is a dock where they're wanting to do a boat lift or have power. But again, I'll go back to, and I still believe we're working toward, when we get an, an appropriate ordinance for RVs, that, that issue will go away. Because that's the only issue we've had right now, especially in my district, where people are wanting to, that's, I'm fine with people having a dock to be able to use their property. They might still be two or three years away from when they're going to retire and they, they have plans to build a house. I'm fine with people being able to use their property. The issue is coming is when they require something with power and now we're trying to deal with an RV that winds up becoming a VRVO because they're still three years out. You know, it, I think if we do away with the power part of it with docks, we take care of it. But I'm still in favor of having a broader discussion and nailing down what is secondary use and accessory use in our Franklin County code.
Mr. Chairman, currently in your zoning code, there's not any authorization or distinction between a dock with or without power. It just simply says that docks are an exempt accessory use. Maybe to clarify it for the public so they'll, they'll understand. Here, here's what the current, the, the section two two zero point zero two of the county code, here's what it currently provides for accessory structure and use. A structure or a use customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal structure or used and located on the same lot, an accessory structure shall not be constructed. or used and located on the same lot, an accessory structure shall not be constructed nor accessory use allowed until such time as the principal structure is erected. Seawalls and docks are exempt from this requirement. And since they, when we refer to them as being exempt, that's what we're referring to. So perhaps, how does the board feel about maybe just on a temporarily, temporary basis, removing the dock exemption and incorporating into a broader consideration as the chairman just discussed, and then adopting a new ordinance in the future? And then you could, you know, make some distinctions about docks with power or without power as it relates to having a principal use on the property. How does the board feel about that as an option?
The only, the only issue I have with that is we don't know how many permits are outstanding right now.
Right.
Well, you would grant, it would be docks that are presently permitted, you wouldn't cut them off. You would go ahead and allow them to process, or you would just simply on the adoption.
Well, we tried this before, and it didn't work that way, but go ahead.
We did?
Yeah, we did with other things, but go ahead. Where we talked about one, but it ran affect them all, but go ahead.
Yes. So how does the board want to proceed? The ordinance as presented is, the proposal is to remove docks as an exempt structure. The ordinance would either be accepted as written or rejected as written, or if the board has a proposed modification, that is certainly something that could be discussed as well, i.e. docks without power are not exempt, not exempt structures until you actually have a principal use.
Well, the, it didn't actually, the dock is the problem. So the only thing that needs power is a boat lift or something that's going to require power to lift something. They're usually attached to a dock, so I don't know how to legally make all that work, but that's usually where the problems come in. Docks are not the issue.
Yeah.
The issue are, the issue are the boat lifts. The issue are the boat lifts, you know what I mean?
Well, we did not advertise to regulate boat lifts, just docks, so what we, if that's the board's inclination, then my recommendation would be not to adopt the ordinance as written and then address all of these other issues as part of the broader policy discussion that's come up since the board authorized this ordinance.
Well, I'm just one of five, so I mean, what do y'all, what do y'all think about?
I'm the same way. I feel the same way you do. Our main thing is that, you know, we're concerned about the RVs, the docks, the power. That's what, I mean, that's, that's my big concern, especially out there in the eastern part of the county. So, I mean, you got it. I know that we need to take that out from underneath the exemption, but we need a whole lot more than that, too, you know?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I agree. I mean, there's multiple things here at play. I think the biggest thing is our whole, as we said before, a whole zoning code needs to be just redone, because my, my definition of what a primary structure is may be different than, than someone's consider, or definition of secondary structure. We use accessory and secondary all the time. It's up for, you know, deliberation as to what means what. But that being said, I think the issue is with, with the, with the lifts and the providing for the power. I think, I think docks themselves isn't a bad thing necessarily. It's just that the list, but then if that's the case, we need to amend our application, because if you ever go and look at the application on the building department, it's generic. It says boat slips, lift, slash lifts, and so someone puts two there, there's no way to discern if it's going to be a lift, if we're approving a lift or a slip.
There's going to be different lines and other.
There needs to be, right. So there's multiple things at play. So I'm, I'm good with tabling this until we can get some definitions, some language inserted that where we know what we're talking about. And I know that we talked, I don't know if Mr. Merle talked to, I've talked to some P&amp;Z members personally, but have they looked at this and given any input as to what their?
No, not yet. Not, not yet.
Okay, okay. I think we maybe need to reach out to them, too, and get their input and opinion on it, because they're the ones really approving it or not, not approving it before it comes to us, anyway. So we need to get their input as well, in my opinion, so.
Add it to their July 9th agenda, okay?
Have them talk about it that way. We can get kind, kind of like some feedback, because I always like to hear the feedback from P&amp;Z.
And I, I want to be on the same page with them, because, like I said, they're proving it or disproving it, or denying it, or tabling it, and then it comes to us. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
So we're just going to deny this, basically?
I'll make a motion, table.
You would deny, table it?
That, that works procedurally.
To table or deny?
Either one works. If you table it, I'm still going to have to advertise in any event for the next public hearing. So either way works, Commissioner.
We have a motion to table by Commissioner Ward.
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion before we vote?
I, I have one quick thing that may clear this up, is this, why don't we, you know, going forward, trying to thought with it, is if we have a piece of property that does not have a primary structure, and they're coming in wanting to get a dock permit. If they're wanting to get something, let's just say bear land for easy language here, and they're wanting to get a dock permit, if they're requesting a boat lift, then they'd have to come before us and ask for, or, you know, basically tell us, the commissioners, you know, justify and why they need power.
Like a special exception.
And then we can grant them a variance.
Yes.
And then that'll probably end it right there.
Yep. It probably would.
You know, so I mean, that would probably be the cleanest way, move forward with it, and then we can actually vote on it next time.
And Mr. Chairman, I know we're, we got a motion on the floor and we haven't voted yet, but, but while we're talking about it, let's, let's throw this out there, impact fees. You know, our county is probably about one of not, and I know people don't like that word. I like that word, because at our conference, what did we learn? Fifty-seven percent of a county's income is from impact fees?
A lot of counties.
So you get all these extra things, and like we were talking about developers coming in, talking about people, you know, infrastructure. Get these, and I know this is going away from, but I'm just mainly saying if we, if we start charging some, and we can control the impact fees, like depending upon what they're doing, how, we can control how much is, is cost, but like docks, if we provide an impact fee for anybody wanting to put a dock, you know, that's money that we can get to go in our coffers for infrastructure for other things. And like any development that comes in, if we charge impact fees, guess what? People can say, well, that, the roads, that the people are going to, the ingress and egress, and the roads that are going to, traffic's going to be increased from this development for people coming and going, that's what impact fees are, impact fees are for, is to provide for the infrastructure and provide for the upkeep of things. So I, I think that's moving forward, that's something, and I just brought it up under this because we're talking about docks, that's, that should be, to me, an impact fee with the dock.
Now, on impact fees, you've got to be careful, because like Walcollo County had an impact fee for emergency medical services, and we are mandated by the state of Florida to provide emergency medical services. Mr. Leon Nettles was, was county commissioner back then. He challenged it in court. He won. So Walcollo County had to pay back all that, so we need, I agree, we need.
We can control it.
Yeah.
Don't say we can control what we charge impact fees and what we don't.
Yeah, I agree with it. We need to do something, because our county is losing a lot of revenue, especially from the development, and like you said, the developers coming in and all that.
It's like the flooding that we talked about earlier, fire hydrants, you know, if we charge impact fees, that's what, that's what those impact fees can pay for. We could probably have our, all of our roads redone, all of our stormwater drainage improvements done with all, with, with impact fees. You know, you're coming to build a house, a million dollar house, charge an impact fee. I'm not saying an exorbitant fee, you know, not $19,000 impact fee to build a million dollar house, just an impact fee just for the, the service of having to, you know.
The impact on what you're going to do.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I, I know I kind of got the little rabbit hole there, Chairman, sorry.
Just a little.
One more thing to add to the dock, just keep in mind, we do have some waterfront property that is, you know, it's not buildable.
That's right.
But if, if, you know, by going this route that we were potentially going down, you're going to take away the ability for that property owner to build a dock without power and go out and have a gazebo or, or seat in there. We, we, there's places along the river that, that we have those properties. So I just think that the cleanest way to do it is, is just, like I said before, if they want power to it, they can come before us and, and, and request the exemption or the variance, whatever word term we're going to use with it, but I think that would just be the easiest way to take care of it all. You know?
Do you have all those things we discussed there?
End of all.
Sounds good. Any other discussion before we vote?
No.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's your end.
Commissioner's act concludes the two public hearings scheduled for this.
Well, let's take a short five-minute recess, and we'll come back to Ms. Griffith. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Up next on our agenda, we're going to Ms. Erin Griffith, our fiscal manager, grants coordinator.
Okay, first item on my report, staff has requested the attached two task orders from Restore Consultant Langton and Associates. Task order number two for the countywide dune restoration project will allow Langton to assist with general grant administration services during the project implementation and construction period. And I do want to add that right now, MRD and Associates is actually working on developing the homeowner list as far as being able to send out those licensing agreements for all of the properties that will receive the dune planting along the waterfront areas. And task order number two for the SGI Stormwater Improvements Project will assist the county with developing the RFQ solicitations for the construction engineering and inspection component of the construction project, and will assist with meeting treasury guidelines for procurement and solicitations. And we will be moving forward with that, actually within the next month, we'll actually be going out for the CEI services for SGI Stormwater. They have not yet approved our construction grant award, but from what we understand, we are in the final stretch of that. So action item A is board action to approve Langton's task order number two for the countywide dune restoration construction project to be billed hourly not to exceed $20,436 for the entire implementation phase of the project. And action item B, board action to approve Langton's task order number two for the SGI Stormwater Construction Project to be billed hourly to not exceed $7,626 for assistance with the construction engineering and inspection solicitation and contract award process.
Attorney Schuler, since these are two separate items, can we do them in one motion, or do they need to be separate?
Since they're two different subject matters, I would recommend two different motions.
On item A, what's the pleasure of the board?
So move.
Second. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by two, Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Kroom. Second. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by two, Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Kroom. Any discussion, commissioners, before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. On item B, pleasure of the board?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Erin, before you go on, when did we start this, trying to do this stormwater project on the island with Treasury?
My goodness.
Was it five years ago?
At least. Yep.
I thought it had been that long.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Item number two, it's an asset disposal request. The Franklin County Health Department has submitted the attached fixed asset disposal request for a 2005 six-by-12-foot cargo trailer. The Health Department has said the nearly 20-year-old cargo trailer is no longer movable and requests that the Franklin County landfill assist with the disposal. Board action to approve the attached fixed asset disposal request for the '05 cargo trailer and authorize the removal of the asset from the department's inventory.
Pleasure of the board. So moved. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kroom.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next action item number three, as part of the ARPA Beach Parking Improvements Project, the attached change order will add approximately 20 delineated parking spaces to the west of the new parking area and add an additional area at Third Street West on St. George Island for the recently completed dune walkover. This change order is based on per-unit pricing for materials included in the original bid and the added parking improvements will include compacted base, gravel, delineated parking, and landscaping improvements. Board action to approve the attached $95,635.40 change order with the GeoFlora Group for the additional beach parking improvements. And I did actually include an illustration to kind of notate on here where the parking improvements will be. In the map excerpt above, highlight areas from left to right, Third Street West, which will be improved parking, base, gravel, and parking stops for access to the newly completed Third Street Dune Walkover. First Street West, which will include improved parking, base, gravel, parking stops, and landscaping. This is the area actually behind Suncoast Realty and in front of the Norman Group Real Estate and across, across from BJ's Pizza as well. And it's also adjacent to the Chili Boulevard and First Street Parking Improvement Area that was just completed in the spring, which featured base gravel, asphalt striping, stops, and landscaping.
Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kroom. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, these are the American Rescue Relief Act funds?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that the public knows where the money's coming from, not your tax dollars.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. Next action item number four, at the last meeting, a draft policy for premium seasonal weekend pay was presented for consideration. The county's labor attorney, Trevor Carson, has since reviewed the attached policy and made minor corrections to the verbiage. To address staffing shortages and increase workload during peak season months during the year, Franklin County shall pay non-exempt employees a supplemental premium pay equal to an additional 25% of his or her rate of basic pay for non-overtime hours worked on a Saturday or a Sunday, not to exceed 10 hours per day between March 1st and September 10th. Employees entitled to overtime for hours worked will be paid at the standard overtime rate of one and a half times his or her regular rate of pay. This policy shall take effect immediately upon adoption by the board and will not be paid retroactively. This policy will be subject to renewal each year. Board action to adopt and authorize the chairman to sign the attached 2024 Premium Seasonal Weekend Pay Policy. And this was actually in response to, some of our departments were actually struggling to actually have employees who would be willing to work weekends. And such would occur, let's say that they were off several days during the week. There was really no incentive for them to then pick up a weekend shift, so this is in response to that. The work is also extremely hot and a lot of usage in the summer months, specifically with garbage pickup from the Parks and Recreation Department and ball tournaments and such. So this is in response to, you know, trying to satisfy a need for our workforce.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. This is for all our county departments, though, not just Parks and Rec and the Road Department. It's for emergency services. It's for everybody. Okay.
It would be all board employees.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to adopt this.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, a second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. Next action item number five, Franklin County would like to request funding assistance for the repair and full replacement of the decking on the wooden section of the SGI fishing pier. This section is approximately 15-foot wide by 160-foot long. The existing decking material is at the end of useful life and full replacement of the decking is recommended as the spans are over open water. The fishing piers in East Point and St. George Island are both big attractions for tourists. And the county will direct purchase the special-order three-inch-thick pressure-treated lumber and stainless steel fasteners. And contractor MKM Quality Construction has provided the attached estimate to demo the existing decking and install the new decking over the bridge span. Funding repairs to fishing piers is unauthorized use of TDC sales tax proceeds per Florida Statute 125.0104. Funding request summary and board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached funding assistance request for the Tourist Development Council. And I've also included some photos of the condition of the pier's decking. And just one item to note, it's not really something that I feel like our employees could handle, mainly because it is open, over open water. And you can actually see the five-foot spans there. If, you know, any of those timbers were to be in any worse condition, there would be a chance of, you know, someone actually going through.
Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a, I'll make a motion to approve, but I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
How old is this dock? Do we know?
That actually occurred in the aftermath of, it was Tropical Storm Debbie.
So 2007?
Correct.
So it's lasted a good little while. My concern is, you know, with our, with our saltwater climate, you know, we spend all this money to replace decking or redo these things, and it's, it's just a vicious cycle. I, I know that the, that new, I don't know what, what you call it, the material, but I know it's a little bit more expensive, but I think that anything that is around our saltwater, which is everywhere, especially this, maybe we can, the next time, look at getting it with that new decking board that's worth, that, you know, you're going to spend the money. Might as well spend the money and get what you want that's going to last longer, in my opinion. Instead of just every, however many years, coming before and having to get this wood replaced in it. Are those nails? It looks like, I don't know if they're nails or screw, those are screws.
They're rocking.
Yeah, they're right.
It just, you know, and the pressure-treated wood is not what it used to be, because all the environmentalists, I guess, they didn't want, it was chemicals in it. The pressure-treated lumber don't last that long. So we're spending money and spending money and spending money. I'd rather spend the money and get something that gets good quality that's going to last a lot longer than having to spend the money and replace it every five or six years. But that's just a thought. But, but I will, I've made a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Any other discussion? That sounds like an echo, Commissioner. Because that's exactly the same thing I told Ms. Erin when she first talked to me about it.
Well, that would be my comment, was about using composite decking material.
Composite.
Yeah.
I couldn't think of the name of it.
The problem with this particular project is, the material that's underneath, that holds it all up, is made out of wood.
Well, that's true.
So you'd have to replace all of it, not just the decking.
Yeah. Actually, the next time we do that, it probably will be, because it's actually parallel beams that are crossing the span. So probably the next time we replace the decking on this bridge, it will probably be for both.
Well, the, the big thing with, with the decking, though, is it's exposed directly. So you'll get a little bit longer life out of your beams down there than you will that decking. That decking's sitting there in the sun every day. It's contracting, shrinking, and expanding, you know, it's just, I think the, if I'm not mistaken, attempt at all, I think the city went with a composite. Where you step on.
For the pier.
Not, not the pier. I haven't walked down a pier in forever. I'm lazy. But, but where you get out, once you launch your boat, you know, they went to composite there. And, and that was the thing. Only, only drawback, not so much with this bridge here, you don't have to worry about tide surge with storms, because it's so high. But, you know, but, but, you know, to alleviate that, you just put a metal grate down the middle and then, but I'm not going to sit here and beat that, because we're on a record time today.
So far.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, commissioners, next item is strictly informational only. Duke Energy has told HG Harders &amp; Sons, the contractor for the renovations to the old ferry dock boat ramp, that they expect to move the existing power pole at the site mid to late July. Once that power pole is moved, the contractor can begin work and the boat ramp will be closed to the public until the new ramp is completed. And then we also have just another miscellaneous project update. We are still waiting on the grant award agreement for the Landarch EMS station. Once we actually have that grant award agreement in hand, we can actually go out for construction bids. And then also, the county hopes to host a ribbon cutting onsite at that time. And we'll also try to get the new fire truck from Landarch Village to also be onsite for that, that same ceremony.
That would be good. Any other questions or concerns for Ms. Griffith before we move on? Ms. Erin, you did good. I noticed you actually skipped some words in your report, too, but.
I did.
Good job. No, thank you for everything you did, Ms. Erin. Listen, you, you have been indispensable to this board to try to keep some of these projects moving along, because some of them just don't move by themselves. So, thank you for helping us stay updated on all that stuff and pursue dollars that keeps it from coming directly from our ad valore. It makes a big difference. Thank you. Attorney Schuler?
All right, sir. The first item on my agenda is board consideration of what I have referred to as the restatement of the Fifth Amendment of the hospital bylaws. If you recall, sometime late last year, Mr. Walker sent me a proposal with some basically clerical grammatical changes to the hospital bylaws, and that is what is in front of you today. I've given you a red line so that you can easily see the different words that were changed and added. And there's also a clean version. I noticed when I was preparing the report yesterday that the date still has a June execution date, so that's the only change that would, I would inform the board would need to be made to this proposal that's in front of you. But just for example, on the first page, they wanted to change the capital T to a lowercase t, wanted to change the word assure to ensure. There was a clarification or correction of the typo, apparently the $50,000 cap had said $5 cap instead of $50,000. And I, I won't take you through all of these, but they, they are non-substantive changes, house cleaning, so to speak. I sent the red line back over to Mr. Walker at the hospital for his review and the review of the hospital. He came back and gave him the thumbs up, so they, they had no issues with the red line. So, since there weren't those substantive changes being made, I've not termed this or titled it as a Sixth Amendment. So it's just a restatement of the Fifth Amendment to the bylaws that the board approved, I think sometime in early 2019. So unless the board has any questions for me, I am requesting that the board approve the restatement of the hospital bylaws as presented to you and authorize the chairman to sign it.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Do we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Kroom. Any discussion, commissioners? Before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there are public comment requests.
Yes, there are.
On that item on my report, do you want me to wait until a public comment?
Yes, sir. Let's go into the public comment first.
Yes, sir.
They've been waiting for a good long time. Ms. Stanley Colvin? Please come forward, ma'am. State your name for the record. You have five minutes.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Stanley Colvin. Before I get started, I just want to mention that I wrote a letter and sent it by email, I guess, three or four weeks ago, to the commission. And I want to give a shout out to Commissioner Ward. Within an hour of sending that letter, I had a phone call from her. I was very impressed then, and I still am, and I thank you. In watching the last three meetings on TV, I also want to thank Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Jones for voting to approve the motion on the stop work order. Thank you very much. I live at 824 West Bayshore Drive, across the street and just east of the property in question. I bought my house in 1994 in the neighborhood zone then R1, as it still is today. I am here now because I believe the structure in question, without a doubt, is a detached dwelling. And that if the owner is allowed to proceed, it will set a precedent for future building of two dwellings on one parcel of property. Attorney Weiss, who has been retained by Mike King, my neighbor, said it best in paragraph three of his June 25th letter to the commission, and I quote, "It has the potential to result in the proliferation of multiple dwelling units on single parcels, which is contrary to the purpose and intent of the regulations and will overcrowd and overburden the infrastructure on the island. I caution other property owners on the island to pay attention to this." Although on a slightly different subject, I also found Attorney Schuler's language, excuse me, in a draft of a proposed amendment to Ordinance 1982-6 to also express my concerns. He states there, quote, "Whereas travel trailers on land that lacks a principal use and structure adversely impacts the orderly development of Franklin County and the value of surrounding property. I submit to you that approving this construction of multiple units on a single lot impacts the orderly development of St. George Island and impacts the value of my property and that of my neighbors." I'll close with just a couple of random points. The construction in question was initially begun with no building permit at all. This is not the first time landowner getting ready to build his dream house on St. George Island. This man, at one time at least, had a contractor's license in the state of Alabama. Now, he has a crew that frames homes in Franklin County and the surrounding area. Seems more than a little odd that he didn't understand upfront that he needed a building permit. And until we brought that to the attention of the Building Department, nothing was being said or done. And before any construction actually began, the Building Department was aware of what was going on. In discussions with them, we were initially told that the determining factor on a dwelling was whether or not a stove was in place. Later, in a previous county commission meeting, and I don't remember who it was, said something to the effect that, no, it was whether there was a 220 outlet in the structure. And now it seems to be whether cooking can take place in this structure. The plans for this so-called pool house show a 220 outlet for the dryer in the laundry room. And the so-called kitchenette has plenty of room for a stove to be installed one hour after this person gets their seat up. It's just almost laughable. His kitchenette, as it is called on the plans, is larger than my kitchen that I live with on the island. And we all understand that Franklin County is not the sleepy little community it was back in the 1980s when most of these ordinances were adopted. Things have changed a lot on the island and the county in general. As the commission moves forward to amend some of these ordinances, please remember that without compliance and enforcement, the most well- that without compliance and enforcement, the most well-written ordinance is not worth the paper it's written on. I would also stress the importance of having written policies and procedures in the building department, as well as a paper trail documenting any exceptions as they are approved. Thank you very much for your time and appreciate your work.
Thank you. Phil Calandra? Please come forward and state your name for the record, Mr. Phil. You have five minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Phil Calandra. I have a house on 957 West Pine, and I appreciate it. And it's been a long time since I've had the pleasure to speak with you, probably 2008. Anyway, over the last few years, I've had a few interactions with the building department that have gone from confused to seriously concerned. My neighbor, who lives next door, his name is Patrick, I think his last name is Stark. You might know him as the owner of Patty's Raw Bar on the island, so a man of certain respect. Anyway, he built another dwelling on his property that's, I believe, about 30 by 30. And I called the building department at the time and said, "Why doesn't this structure have to be on pilings?" I spoke with the woman in the building department, I don't remember her name, it was a long time ago, and she said, "Well, in the AE zone, it's really kind of at the discretion of the owner." I don't know if that's true or not. I didn't pursue it or make an issue. A couple of years ago, I owned a property, a vacant lot on, between 10th and 11th on Pine, and Cliff and Denise Butler built a house on the adjacent lot. Unbeknownst to me, that lot is in an X zone. There's three zones, AV, AE, and X. And according to the building department, you do not have to build your home or anything on pilings on that property. My issue with that was that the homeowners had a large amount of fill dirt installed, and it was creating, and it was so high that it overflowed onto my property, and I was upset about possible stormwater drainage issues. Again, contacting the building department, writing to you, sir, Mr. Jones, and ultimately, I did get a response from the head of the building department, Steve Patterson, and he basically said, "It's in an X zone. They don't have to do it. There's nothing you can do here. Everything is fine." So, I didn't quite understand it, even when I quoted out of the department code that any new construction has to be concerned with stormwater runoff. Now, there's a secondary issue here, which is that on the plans, and it was even in Mr. Schuler's letter to me at the time, that there's a mother-in-law unit on the home. So, it's a house, a garage, and a mother-in-law unit. And as far as what I'm hearing about this 841 Bayshore, this was done a couple of years ago, and it's setting a precedent. And so, having gone from confusion, I'm now kind of in a place of concern about what goes on here in the building department. I guess kind of in summary, I really want to say that if they're going to be codes, the previous lady said it correctly, that enforce them or don't have them. Having at least, what I brought up is three potential multiple dwellings on three different sites over the last few years is a pattern. It's a bad pattern. It shows that, you know, it's just not good for the county. But what I sort of really think needs to be done is the land use map, zoning, and the code all needs to be reviewed from top to bottom, and all of the vague language and loopholes need to be found and eliminated. Otherwise, what's going to happen is you'll get uncontrolled growth, and you'll get an area that, you know, people don't want to come to. I mean, Franklin County is blessed with such wonderful, beautiful nature, and why allow, you know, why allow it to go bad because people aren't doing their job? Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Sir, thank you, Mr.
Thank you very much.
Sharon Matheson?
First, I want to say thank you for letting me speak a couple of weeks ago. I was a little bit taken aback because I was planning on reading my letter that I had written to the commissioners, and then Commissioner Jones said I didn't need to do that, so I sort of stumbled on what I was going to say. And I want to thank again Commissioner Ward for reaching out to me. Thank you so much. I did appreciate that very much. And I also appreciated the votes that were made to issue the stop order from Commissioners Ward. Commissioner Sanders, thank you so much. Your pool house comment a couple of weeks ago was right on target. That is exactly what a pool house is. And thank you, Commissioner Jones, for also voting on the stop order. I can't add much to what Ms. Colvin said earlier. She was exactly on point on how those of us who are neighbors feel about this. But I would like to say that, looking back at precedent that was set at 327 Gander. 327 Gander, there was a house already on that site, and then a secondary structure was permitted, which was a three-bedroom, two-bath house, which both of those are now separately marketed as short-term rentals. One is Sunset Island, and one is my point of view. The advertisement even notes that they are two homes on one lot for potential guests. A stove was not included, and that was the way it was passed through the system. But now, today, there is a stove. It's in, it's in the description, it's in the photos of the home. So, we have two homes on an R1 lot on St. George. And that is what is going to happen at 841 West Bayshore. We're going to have two homes on one lot, and the minute the certificate of occupancy is issued, just as Ms. Colvin said, there's going to be a stove because there's room for it, there's a dishwasher. If you're not going to be cooking, why do you need a dishwasher? I would like for someone to explain that one to me, because I've been washing dishes with dishwashers because I cook. It's an activity. And so, anyway, I appreciate your addressing this issue, and I, it's just, when you purchase a property, your primary property, you put most of your personal wealth into that property. And you really hope that it, that property will be respected and, and if there's going to be a change in zoning which will impact it significantly, you hope that there will be a hearing, that you will be notified, that you can address those issues. But that was not the case here. That was not the case. But anyway, thank you very much. I do appreciate your addressing the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matheson. Mr. Ben Matheson?
Well, I also live at 316 Mark Street, and I want to thank the board for their previous action. There's not much left for me to say on this. I agree with my wife, actually. But I don't see any reason to change, you know, the act is, we're throwing out the existing, I'm all for maybe we need zoning change, but why throw out the existing zoning altogether? It's, this is rated R1. This is clearly, it doesn't take much imagination if you look at the drawing. The structure that's built there now doesn't, it's not an accessory building. It's a standalone home. Also, the, just to mention the fact that it didn't have a building permit to begin with, the pilings were installed pre any building permit. So, does that mean that they were just there if you apply for a building permit after the fact? Do they have to meet any, you know, engineering standards? Normally, I think on pilings, they're measured the last foot to make sure they're installed per engineering drawings. Does that rate because the building permit wasn't there and they're just existing pilings? So, I just have these questions, but obviously, if you look at this structure, it is not an accessory building. There's no, you have to really close your eyes to think that this is. I thank you for...
Thank you, Mr. Ben. Attorney, so that was all the public comments I had.
Okay. Well, Commissioners, I have put this on my report in the last meeting. It got tabled because we did not have a full board. I brought the issue back up because subsequent to the stop work order being issued, I had heard from a couple of the staff about some other problems, sort of the unintended consequences, to use Chairman Jones's paraphrase on other matters. And I also heard from one of the commissioners about the issues and some problems that had come up, so I thought I would at least create a procedural opportunity for the board to either go back to policies that you had been enforcing and then begin a process to change. We got somebody more public comment? Commissioner Croom? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I see a couple hands.
These were people that turned in their thing ahead of time. You're not in a public hearing.
Yes. You want me to proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, there's a couple of options. The board can, you know, sit steady in the boat, leave the stop work order in place, and then move forward with some of the other zoning code changes that we've been discussing the last few meetings. Or the board could, in order to cure some of these problems that I've been hearing about, I don't know, maybe y'all have been hearing about, does the board want to essentially go back to the pre-June 2nd, June 2nd, June 4th meeting where you put the stop work order in place? And then, you know, that would sort of create, allow these permits for these other accessory structures like swimming pools and, I mean, one of the examples that was given to me is that someone has to be able to put in the swimming pool first before they can then put in place their septic, before they can then build the house based on the configuration of the lot. So, I don't know that the board necessarily intended to stop other construction projects, but that's been the result. So, you know, one option again is for the board to sit steady in the boat, leave the stop work order in place, authorize myself and staff to work together, come up with a proposed change to the zoning code that addresses these issues that we've been talking about the last few meetings, or lift the stop work order, go back to what had been in place before. In other words, looking forward, fix it, but we're not looking backwards because that's essentially, it's been the longstanding policy of the board to allow these, not the board's staff, the actual idea is that the staff have been issuing simultaneous permits for the principal and the accessory structure at the same time, even though that's clearly a variance with the plain language, the black language of your zoning code. So, I just thought I would create a procedural opportunity for the discussion, and that's the reason it's on my report. How does the board feel about this at this point?
I think we need to address a change, but it doesn't need to involve 841 West Bayshore.
Okay.
You already had a clear decision by the board. Yes, it was a split vote, but whatever the board decides is what the board decides.
Okay.
And the staff needs to find a way to make sure they're issuing properly permits to people that are doing new construction. I know that it's adverse, none of us want to have that kind of conversation, but, you know, we've never made a motion to stop all work, and that's what staff has done since then. And, you know, we get elected to set the policies and procedures, and they're already clearly there. So, I don't know what staff has an issue with. All those other ones do not involve 841 West Bayshore Drive. I do not understand. But I'm not going to go and talk to staff every day and try to, no, that's not the way that works. I'm not trying to micromanage them, but, you know, on my job, if I mess up, I got to own it. I can't pass it off to the next 10 customers that come in. I just can't do that. I don't have that availability or that leisure to do so. So, I'm fine with us issuing permits like we've been for every other property, but we need to handle this issue, and the board's already voted about that. So, we need to come up with a clear way to handle this issue, but all the other permits, they need to be issuing permits. They're going to be stopping work orders on houses that are new construction because a mistake was made at one residence. But, you know, I'm one of five.
Don't we basically take it, I do, on a case-by-case basis anyway? That's the way I look at it. I mean, we don't all group everything up. I look at it case by case. I have to say, I concur what the chairman said, myself, as far as 841 West Bayshore.
So, I'm for what's in black and white.
Yeah.
However, sometimes, you know, in the court of law and other cases, you have exceptions. Sometimes you have more exceptions to the rule. Sometimes you have more exceptions than applications. So, therefore, when I made this, you know, this vote, I was looking at the totality of the circumstance in which I always do in everything. The circumstance, the totality in this is what I was looking at is, you know, the county's past practice. The other one was affecting all other homeowners, affecting the businesses. And lastly, it was, you know, what counsel had recommended, or his recommendation. So, those are all the things that I've taken into consideration. What I don't want to see is us keep going back and forth on this. The board has already made the motion last time.
Mr. Chairman, I guess one thing, just for clarification, and my memory is getting mad, but when we voted on this, we did not say we were doing a county-wide stop work order. It was specifically for this property. Now, we did ask staff not to issue any further secondary structure permits until we could get some of this stuff cleaned up. Now, did something happen that I'm not aware of between now and then because I'm kind of getting confused?
Every other thing is considered secondary.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, I understand that, but that's what, I think we had agreed to do it, you know, just not to issue any permits moving forward until we could get the language right. If I'm not mistaken.
If we could go back and if I have to, I'll play the recording because I want to be very clear. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, when we made the motion, Commissioner Ward, if I'm wrong, you correct me, you said the motion was based on the letter of the law of our zoning code. That's what you said. It wasn't specifically directly about this particular address. This address was a problem. But you, and I even, I even came back and I said, "Well, there's been other occasions where the board has said not to enforce the one unit per acre on other properties," and correctly so because it created another problem. But Commissioner Amerson is right. When the motion was made, it's based on what's in the zoning that Attorney Schuler has in there, and that covers all accessory structures. And Commissioner, Chairman, again, with all due respect, I disagree. The staff did not make a mistake. We were doing it based on 30 years and based on what is in the county's zoning code. With Commissioner Croom, I don't want to go back and forth, but I'm not going to, I'm sorry, in my role, I cannot sit here and say that it's a mistake of staff and what staff is doing wrong, the staff is wrong by not issuing other permits. Based on the way the motion was made for the stop work order, staff hands was tied. If you guys, it's your code. You want to make a change, make a change. We will enforce, we work for you. We will enforce any changes you make, may they be temporary... We will enforce any changes you make, may they be temporary, may they be permanent. Our job is to enforce your zoning codes, your ordinances, based on the way it's done. So, I want to be very clear from the staff point of, point of view. We're doing what you have in your zoning code to enforce. And I realize I work for the five of you, but by the same token, I, I, you know, I'm going to stand here and defend staff. I'm sorry.
But, Mr. Chairman, with that, you gotta, everybody has to realize this staff has changed faces maybe two, three times since all this comes out. Now, there's been precedent set back.
With other places.
You know, how many years? And, and that was how I based my decision, and, you know, again, we're not doing back and forth, was, you know, and I think I made that kind of clear. You know, I'm, I'm personally, do I like it? No. But looking at it, I, I thought that it would be a, and I still believe it would have been an easier path just to not look back and let's fix it going forward because there's been a precedent set. Like, again, going back so many years, staff's changed. Staff was just doing what's been done over and over and over. So, I'm going to defend staff there. But we, as Commissioners, we've got to get this cleaned up. And, you know, are we going to keep repeating, this is going to be a rinse and repeat. We've got to get it cleaned up going forward. But to clarify, we didn't do a countywide stop work order. We did it on a specific project, this property.
Now, are they stopped? Hold on, because I don't know what's going on.
They've been stopping.
They've been stopping it?
Yep.
No, they've stopped that one and every other secondary. Am I correct? I mean, I'm trying, we're trying to figure out.
Yes, because based on the motion, we, the, the motion was to put a stop work order because the secondary was being completed before the primary. So, basically, your motion was to, to stop any second, issuance of any secondary permits until the primary is completed. As a matter of fact, Attorney Shuler's definition of completed was with a CO.
Yeah.
He said that.
It is.
But that's what Attorney Shuler said, that was his explanation. So, by making the motion in the way it was made, and that's why I, I stood here and I asked for clarification. Are we going based on what's written in the zoning code, Commissioners? You said yes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, yeah, our zoning code, what aggravates me about this whole situation is that we're in a position now, this is where we are. And I hate it, I don't like it, but how are we as policymakers going to look at something that's black and white and then follow a practice that's, that's, that's just a practice? And I get both sides, and I've got emails. I, I, when I made the motion, I was looking at what we had in black and white. I did make the motion based on that. But I also was specific about this stop work order at this specific address. But that also being said, silly me, and I, I'm going to eat crow on this, I probably shouldn't have said that, but I didn't realize that a swimming pool is considered a secondary structure. It's like, who does that? Like, what person in their code has a swimming pool as a secondary structure? It makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Updated.
And again, this whole cooking thing, they don't need stoves in homes anymore. They've got Instapots, they've got grills, they've got, I mean, so-
Air fryers.
Where does this thing come up with the cook? Again, this is something, this all stems, and it's all started from this particular address. All this was brought to our attention, I think, because of this. But until we get code enforcement, guess what? Just like one of the public, the comment made is, it's not going to do any good with RVs, with anything. It's a mute point to have policy and to have codes and ordinances when they're not being enforced. Because had we have active code enforcement, guess what? We wouldn't be talking about this right now. Those are just my thoughts. I'm tired of hearing about 841 West Bay Shore. I'm going to be honest with you, I'm tired of getting emails. I mean, I, I, I appreciate the public's input, but I mean, I'm glad this was brought to our attention. But I told somebody the other day, this needs to, we need to get a fix to this and move on and quit talking about it.
I'm with you.
Period. So, we need to, I agree with the chairman. I honestly didn't think that they, when I got that, that call, I said, "That wasn't my motion." I said, "I don't, I don't want them to stop work orders or prevent people from building, getting permits for second," you know, I didn't want that to happen. That was not my intent. But then when I found out that swimming pools are secondary structures, I'm like, "Well, if they're going by what was written, then I guess that's the case." But again, that was two different, two different topics. One was the address and one was the whole code, the zoning code. But I want to, right now, as we move forward, we need to get this hashed out. And we need to get it hashed out immediately. Because otherwise, we're preventing people, and I understand the construction aspect of it too, with the contractors that are trying to get a pool. I had an email from a guy that is, can't pull a permit for a swimming pool, and they have to have the swimming pool before the primary structure is built. So, I get that, that aspect as well. But we need to get it fixed, we need to get it fixed now. We need to define accessory versus secondary. We need to define, put a square footage on it perhaps. This stuff needs to be done, and it needs to be done quick.
Well, my interpretation is primary is primary. And when you say primary, that means your home, your house. And if it says that construction cannot go on onto a secondary or accessory or whatever, and until the primary is done, that's what it means. No pools, no pool house, no storage buildings, no nothing until that house is built. Now, but the storage buildings now come in here, and see, that's where I kind of differ. Because I understand a lot of people buy this property and they want to build a house, but they got to have something to store something under, so that's the reason why you got the storage building. But what I'm talking about as far as pools go, it ain't a necessity to have a pool around here with all these waters. You know what I mean?
No, it's not, but-
I know that I got one, so I know what I'm talking about. But I didn't get my pool until like six years after I built my house.
Now, the problem is, and I'm sure the chairman and some of the other Commissioners could say, the contractors are explaining that, again, it's, it's, some of the speakers said it right. The code is outdated. So, the contractors are saying that in order to get their, their septic aerobic system, whatever, if there's a pool in the plant, they have to get the pool built first. So, it's part of the calculations for the aerobic so they can get to build a house.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not a contractor. I didn't know that. Commissioner Ward, I'm with you, I didn't know that, you know? So, here we are at this situat, now, if, if there's a way that the, a county attorney could recommend to us, okay, so maybe, maybe if, no, because I know I'm going to say something that I probably should. If there's a way to change the reason of the stop work order, which would then free up staff to continue doing what they're doing, issue for accessory structures. For now, until we fix the code, fine. We need to, Commissioner Ward, we need to fix this, and we need to fix it now. We, we have, we have a lot of people that are, are, we're hauling up a lot of permits because we can't, and I know some of you don't agree with me, but I'm sorry. Our interpretation is based on the code. If we, we, we did the original stop work order based on it was a secondary structure and we needed the primary, primary structure built first and CO. So, we need to fix that as soon as we possibly can. Today, if possible, if not today, as soon as possible. We really do.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the definitions need to change. Because it's so contradictory. That, that's, that's just one aspect. You also have the R1 aspect, again, which is the dwelling. And what's, what's defined as dwelling is something with the cooking thing, which we all know now, we don't need a stove to cook in a house. We need to, we need to make it square footage, where it's only X amount of square footage, or, or, you know, restrict that as what's considered a secondary.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to square footage on that.
There's all kinds of ways we can fix it. It's just a matter of we all coming together collectively and the public input as well to figure out how we can fix it to where if moving forward, it's concise and clear and there's no, there's no misinterpretation. Because like I said, my primary structure definition might be different from Commissioner Sanders' secondary structure. Like I said, I never in a million years would have thought pool was considered a secondary structure. Never. Never in my 45 years of life, I've never known a pool to be-
I never would have thought that a pool house would have been two and a half bedrooms, two and a half bath.
Well, you know, Commissioner-
I'm going to go right back to that again.
We, we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, and she said, "Michael, when this code is properly written, there are maybe 10 pools in the entire county."
Not even that many in the whole county.
That's true.
Because you got all this water.
Yes. So, yeah.
They have sharks in them, there's sharks in them.
Yes. Again, it, it, I, I agree with every Commissioner sitting here today. We need to fix it as soon as we possibly can so the staff can go back to issuing secondary. For, for pools, at first I thought that maybe moving pools to an exception was the answer. In his wisdom, Attorney Shuler said, "No, no, 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 sir, you don't want to do that because then somebody can pump, come and pull a permit for a pool in a dock and whatever building a house. You don't want to do that." He's absolutely right. Absolutely right.
Mr. Chairman, you on the way in?
Well, a question for the board. The, what was the cause of all of this? The cause of it was really detached secondary structures. Call it a mother-in-law suite, call it a detached pool house. It's detached. So, you know, how does the board feel about the issue of not necessarily banning mother-in-law suites, just not allowing them to be a detached second structure? Make it be attached to the primary.
I thought they couldn't be detached. I thought they couldn't be detached. I thought I had to be part of-
Has to have a breezeway.
But, Mr. Chairman, that's my whole point too, is not interrupt Attorney Shuler, but what's considered detached versus attached? A breezeway, I think you brought that up, Commissioner Amerson? A walkway, some pavers, I mean, and, and I'm not saying, you know, we're, I know, without getting into the weeds, probably overanalyzing this, but we got to overanalyze it because obviously, people are taking advantage of it. And, and I know somebody mentioned loopholes. If there's, listen, people are going to find a loophole. It doesn't matter, you can have that clear and concise as it can be. You're going to have a loophole somewhere that somebody's going to know and try to get in through and do a loophole. But that's why we need to, to get to work on this, and I think that we need to-
To clarify, when I say not detached but attached to the principal structure, I don't mean attached by breezeway or pavers or anything else. I mean, it's essentially, I mean, it is physically like attached to the, you know, you've got a exterior wall and then you add a room to it and put a door. I mean, that, that's, breezeways, I mean, that, that, pavers, I, I can see where that leads to a lot of mischievousness.
Underneath the same roof?
Anyway, I mean, I've always said that human nature is my bread and butter as a practicing attorney because, I mean, people are just, they're going to be sneaky.
And the way, the way you do that, and I know that's not part of this conversation because we got this in front of us right now. Put a square foot minimum on it, a second, on a, on a mother-in-law suite? Or a pool house? Just have a square footage, this is the minimum square footage it can be, and that, that takes care of that.
And eliminates the stove option, eliminates all this other crap. But then again, sorry, Mr. Chairman, but what about our R1 zoning code? Where it does state you have to have one dwelling per unit or per lot?
Well, that's what I was suggesting or seeking some guidance from the board because I, I can sit down with, with Mr. Carrington and sort of wordsmith up some language, but the, you know, if, if, but if the board is not interested as policymakers in essentially eliminating detached structures other than storage sheds, then I don't want to draft something and bring it to you if the board is not thinking that's the appropriate solution to this policy issue.
Well, at the end of the day, a couple of things. Number one, I still say that, that these are one of the primary reasons we've never had handled in the past because we just never had the kind of issues we're having. But we need to, at some point, have some discussions with different entities in my district, and we need to look at doing a special zoning for St. George Island.
Yes, we do.
Because St. George Island is different everywhere else. It, it's, so you, you're not having anybody in East Point. Most of them aren't even trying to put a pool with their house. It's just not, it's just not the same thing.
Aerobic systems and all that, sir.
It's all different, and it all has to fit, especially with new construction. But the issue we have in front of us today is how are we going to give staff the leeway to continue to issue these accessory permits so people can do the new construction and not be held up because of what we're trying to work through at 841 West Bay Shore?
Do you want limited to pools, Mr. Chairman, or all accessories? I mean, because I don't want to have to come back to you when people complain about storage shed.
Yeah, well, so I don't want to get in trouble here, so I'll do like you did with the attorney.
Mr. Chairman, before you do, would you, would you explain publicly? I, I have somebody on Zoom with their hands up, but they did not turn in a speaker card.
Yes.
I don't want them to think we're ignoring them, but without the speaker card, just our hands are tied based on our policy.
We're not ignoring anybody. The policy we've been doing now for a couple of years is before a meeting starts, people are returning their submission for public comments.
Yes, sir.
And we wait until the appropriate time of the meeting that these four had stated they wanted to comment.
Yes.
And we took their public comments.
Yeah, this is not, not a public comment, sir.
But during a public hearing, we just take comments, period.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, we're not trying to mess with it. But Attorney Shuler, is there a clear way for us to direct staff to start issuing accessory? And I'm, I'm being careful which words I'm using. For, for accessory uses that have to do with new construction that would not be a secondary dwelling space of any sort? Be it pool house, be it mother-in-law suite or anything else? If it's something that does not involve, it, it's a livable space, then they are not allowed to issue that secondary permit until we go through the process and redo what we need to do in our code. That's my question.
I'm looking at the definitions in the code.
I'm staying.
Yeah, that's very important to look at the definitions. I learned that the hard way.
The one thing I can remember is the first mother-in-law thing that we, that came before the board with Mr. George and Ms. Pat Mayer. Her mother was getting sick over there off of River Road and come before us, and that's the very first case of a mother-in-law thing. So, we need to go all the way back there and see.
Right, but apparently it went from their commissioner to being something that staff just started issuing the permits both at the same time.
I know.
While he's looking, how about what Commissioner Amerson said earlier on another item? How about things like a detached dwelling comes as a special, you follow as a special exception procedure that this board has to approve? Do you like that, you don't like that?
I, I like it, I like it.
Yeah.
I don't mind telling somebody, no?
But, but anything to do with, with their, their, a pool or a drain field or, I mean, that's part of building, building the property.
Yeah, can we separate out, you know? But again, back in the day, pools probably weren't treated, you know?
Well, well, that's what threw me away. I'm like, because when I got that call, I'm like, why are they not giving permits for, for pools? And I called Steve, our buildings, I said, "What's going on?" I mean, this was, and I was with the chairman, I was like, "This was for this specific..." But then I was, I said, "Okay, black and white, I did say that." And he, and I said, and I looked up the definition and I'm like, since when is a... I think of a structure or dwelling as a structure as a frame, something that is being built, constructed from the ground up, not in the ground, not a pool. I thought, I'm like, that's just so stu, I don't, silly. And it'd make any sense to me that a pool was considered a structure. But again, I learn something new every day and realize it did say that as a definition. And I, but, but I understand, again, like I said, that sometimes pools do need to be installed before the, the primary structure is built, so.
Calculating on the aerobic system and all that.
Yes, but we go back to the chairman. It sounds very specific to St. George Island right now. So, they need, I'm sorry, I really agree that they need their own zoning, Commissioner. I mean, it, it's-
I'm agreeing with that.
We agree too.
Yes, we really do.
But, see, you run in something there. Some of our county is incorporated area, you know, an incorporated area. Some of them have water receiver, and some of them don't. They're still on wells or in septic tanks, so.
Almost everybody else, almost.
We need to, we need, we really need to sit down and think about this hard and fast because we ain't got much time.
Yes, I agree long-term. But as the chairman has asked the, the Attorney Shuler, what can we do today to free up staff to issue the backlog of accessory structures that are not? Again, I, I'm good with saying no more, what's the term you want to use, Mr. Chairman? No more?
No, no more dwellings.
No more dwellings.
Spaces.
Yes. No more dwellings for now. That, that, it seems like the board wants to put a hole in that, but they want all the other accessory structures to be permitted.
Could it be something like air-conditioned space?
Or heated pool space.
Yeah, heated pool space.
Oh, you feel about-
Most pool houses aren't heated and cooled, but I've been in it, but anyway.
The whole pool house definite, label on it was just, yeah.
Attorney Shuler?
The issue is that we are constrained by the actual language in the zoning code. I understand what staff has been, the practice of staff for decades, as I understand it, we all understand what's been going on. Primary and secondary structure, accessory use structure permits have been issued simultaneously. Even though that's clearly against the black and white language of the zoning code. I don't find anything in the code that would support what we're talking about now, which was to say that the pools are no longer considered to be a, an accessory structure because the language in the code says it is an accessory structure. That's tough to get around.
Yeah, no, that's, that wasn't my question. I'm sorry if I misstated it. My question is, what language would we use to make a motion and vote today to allow staff to continue to issue any accessory permit that would allow for the continued new construction of a house? As long as it's not a permit for a secondary use, which would be a dwelling space?
There's nothing in the code now, Mr. Chairman.
I understand that. I'm saying what motion and vote can we take today to allow them to do that? Finish in my statement, until we are able to actually hold public hearings and actually work through this code and change it. So it would be an emergency situation. It would be outside the code. It would be a motion and vote of the board today. That's my question.
Can you adopt an emergency ordinance to write a new definition into the code?
That's what I'm asking.
That's what I'm asking.
Just up and until we actually take the time to amend the code. So I'm saying.
So even better, a temporary emergency ordinance. That's even.
Temporary.
With a sunset.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
I will need more than a moment to think about that, Mr. Chairman. Because there's nothing in the code. That's one reason I had suggested going back to, I know it's very unpalatable, but since we've been doing the simultaneous permit process for decades, that to me seemed like the clearest path forward is to continue doing that and then authorize staff to come up with the solution. And frankly, since I haven't given any thought with either Mike or Mr. Carrington on what the solution would be, it's really difficult for me to try and build this airplane while we're trying to fly it.
I understand.
Without the input from the planner. I know. So that was the reason I had suggested as a stopgap measure would be the recommendations and thoughts that are contained in my report today.
Well, let's do this. We'll take a five-minute break and give you a minute to think about it.
Franklin County Commissioner now back in session. Attorney Schuler.
Mr. Chairman, I've heard your instructions very clearly and I've listened to the board. The issue that I have is this is an unprecedented circumstance. We've never tried to adopt any amendments to the zoning code on an emergency basis. So what I would like to do is for the board to, I understand pretty clearly you don't like the first prong of my item on the report, which is to go back to the old policy until we can fix it. But the second prong of my report also requests that you authorize me to work with staff, which would be basically myself, Mike, and Mr. Carrington and Mr. Patterson, to come up with a proposal. And if I can do so on an emergency basis, then I will contact Mr. Morone and we will schedule an emergency public hearing. But I'm not comfortable trying to create something here on the fly this morning because this is an unprecedented situation that needs a little more forethought put into it. I appreciate the urgency, and again, it's the law of unintended consequences that I've asked the board to deal with again this morning. I just felt that it was important that I bring it up. I usually try and avoid these kind of controversies whenever possible, but it just seemed that it was so important it needed to be addressed head on.
Let me clarify. Did you say, if, that's the pleasure of the board, did you say that it would be an emergency public hearing or an emergency meeting?
Well, an emergency meeting to consider adoption of an emergency ordinance, if we can do so. I know generally speaking, there's a prohibition on making emergency zoning changes, but this is slightly different. You're not actually making a change to the allowable or permitted uses of the zoning category of property. So there may be a path forward to make the change in definitions or otherwise on an emergency basis. But I do want to take a little more time to look at that, and if we can move forward and have an emergency meeting to consider an emergency ordinance, then I will certainly notify the administrator and get that set up.
What's the normal amount of time with that?
I'm sorry.
I thought you was coming to talk to me.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I had a minute, I'm sorry. So Commissioner, I would recommend that if you try and look at your schedules now, if we could, and plan for a week from today, because I think with the holiday, no, not Tuesday?
I got adoption.
Monday, I don't do Monday, I got adoption.
We all getting old.
What's the timeframe, the legal timeframe?
I think emergency is twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Typically on an emergency, we try to give twenty-four.
Yeah, at least twenty-four hours.
How's everybody's schedule for this Friday?
I might can make it if you make it late in the afternoon.
Okay.
This Friday is a holiday.
Yeah, we just closed it. I mean, I plan to work Friday anyway, but so how late on Tuesday, like three?
Well, no, I'd say four or five.
Commissioner, are you looking for Tuesday? Tuesday is P and Z.
That's P and Z.
They're at five-thirty now, so we'd have to do it at four-thirty or four o'clock.
Don't you have an appointment that day? Be back in time?
Until I have to.
I'm just trying to work out schedules now so that...
Do we have something on the 10th? That's a Wednesday.
No, but every day you're talking about some other day that they'll be shut down for a month.
Yeah, yeah, I kind of want to tick stuff up that situation we're in, so.
We can't do it tomorrow because it has to be twenty-four hours notice. Can't do it the 5th because that's, everybody's off that day. I mean, I could do it the 5th, but I know that's technically a holiday, so.
I can do it.
Actually, I can't do it on the 5th, but...
Mr. Chairman, may I first see if we're allowed to adopt this on an emergency basis and then clear the schedules? At this point, I'm not confident that it can be done on an emergency basis, but if it can, then I'll notify Mr. Morone and he can work through everyone's schedule. Or we can do it now, I mean, I'm not trying to...
Be kind, they get denied.
Yeah, so that I can go ahead and contact and advertise. So how bad is everybody for maybe Tuesday afternoon at four? Is that really bad?
I'm doing it.
When is it now?
Tuesday afternoon?
Tonight? I'd have to try to get off work.
My appointment, yeah, my appointment's at eleven-thirty.
I'm going to be pushing it, trying to get back there.
Yeah.
But I can, I can.
We don't want you getting a speeding ticket.
Yeah. Because Jim Leroy, I know the traffic officer in Franklin County, he will write you a ticket.
He'll rock me up in a heartbeat.
You sure will.
I know it. But he's my friend.
Wednesday, okay, Wednesday morning, because between Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday morning, Mr. Chairman, there won't be any permits, you see, I'm saying to be issued. Can we do it first thing Wednesday morning? How's everybody's schedule for that?
I got an appointment at ten-thirty, but I can change that.
Could we do it at nine and then try to get you out of here?
We need to get it done.
I don't see this being past an hour worth of discussion.
I wouldn't guarantee that.
Really?
Yeah, be careful making those.
That gets me in trouble all the time. I thought we've kind of talked about it.
I can do it that afternoon, but I can also cancel my appointment, so whatever's good for everybody. But we need to do this sooner or later, and if the tent's good for everybody, I can make arrangements with my schedule to make it happen.
Wednesday morning?
Yeah.
I could...
Oh, y'all get on the 10.
Nine o'clock is good?
Whatever time works for her, we'll make it work.
My appointment's at ten-thirty, but I mean, I can reschedule it, just make, be three, four months before I can get rescheduled again, but it's not a big deal. So y'all want to do it in the morning or afternoon, it's whatever y'all's preference.
Or you could do like Quentin and Aaron, just drive and talk to us.
No, this is important, so I'll just cancel, reschedule my appointment.
Commissioner, Colonel?
I'm fine, I'm just, I want to make sure.
I'm good.
I don't want you canceling the appointment.
This, well, this is important, so this needs to be done and attended to.
Wednesday, nine?
Yes, I'll put for nine.
Nine o'clock in the morning, I went to the tent.
I can get you at eight-thirty if you'd like. Can we do it a little bit earlier? You do it eight-thirty?
Just do it at eight-thirty, we'll make this quick. What's the latest that you can cancel that appointment?
I can cancel it today, it's not a big deal.
The other way, further cancellation, give me a day or two to look at, because if we can't do this on an emergency basis, there's no need to cancel your appointment.
Oh, okay, I could probably cancel twenty-four hours ahead of time.
Okay, but if we can do it temporarily right now, we're looking at Wednesday at eight-thirty, correct?
In the morning?
In the morning.
And this is, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Got it.
So we'll see what Attorney Schuler says.
Then we'll be out of here by your time for your appointment.
Maybe.
Yeah.
I might have to cancel it.
That's what I'm saying. I think we're pretty much on the same page. We just all want to meet the same goal, and I think, yeah, we're there.
The only thing, I only can see my doctor on too, Steve, because he's been serving every time, so.
Do we need a...
No, no motion yet. I just kind of want to check your schedule. We have to wait until Attorney Schuler lets me know if we can have this emergency hearing, then I'll contact each of you. I'll do the notification. Hopefully, we should know by Friday. I plan to work on Friday anyway, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion and vote of the board to direct myself to work with Mr. Carrington, Mr. Patterson, and Mr. Morone to address these definitional issues that the board has described here today. I'll make that motion.
Can I? So we have a motion back to Commissioner Amos and second back to Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else? Attorney Schuler?
That concludes my report, sir.
So before we move to Commissioner comments, I would like this for us as the chairman of the board, our condolences to you and your family in the loss year eleven.
Thank you.
I know it was sudden and unexpected, but we have thought about you. I just wanted to share that with you. Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, I was going for Attorney Schuler, but what I have for you can wait, considering circumstances, so.
It'll be okay.
Any Commissioner comments?
I just want to say, Chairman, that going down south was a lot of fun. It was good to network with other commissioners and hang out with y'all, even though we hung out and didn't talk about things we weren't supposed to, because we didn't, but just talked about the weather and things in general.
The classes we were going to.
The classes, you know, what classes we were going to, and I think we divided them in con... A lot of us went to some of the same classes, but some of us went to some different classes, and it was, it was a good experience all the way around, I feel. I did talk to Commissioner Gladwell from Walton County and asked him how many times he'd been asked about the shark attack over there. If he had a dollar for every time he'd been asked, he probably could have gone to the Bahamas, he says, so.
That's probably true.
That is true.
It was, it was a good conference. It was a little disjoining not being there at the conference, but it was a good conference overall. They had a lot of good stuff, and another one of our peers, a small county commissioner, John Meach from Levy County, was elected second VP for FATF.
That's a good thing.
Yes, it was a very good thing. And it was, it was an interesting thing. I will say that the two highlights were the special speakers they had.
Oh, yeah.
One of them was, I don't remember her last name now, her first name was Adrian, but she was the young lady that actually lost part of her leg in the Boston bombing, at the Boston Marathon.
Wow.
And she talked about how her life transpired after that. It was, it was, it was very heartfelt, I can tell you that. And then Friday morning, as we're doing the voting stuff, they had a guy speak that was an ex-CIA agent.
James Olson.
Listen, that, I don't know, I just get the sense from him talking that he was afraid of his own wife, because she was also an ex-CIA agent. You know, he said, he said there was one particular instance where they received, actually at their own actual physical address, a letter from someone claiming to be Al Qaeda years ago, threatening them with their life, and when they were conversing with her about what to do, she said, no, this is a ploy to try to see if they can pick up surveillance for us, where you guys are actually surveilling us. She said, leave it alone, let them come. I'm good with it. I guess they never came, because...
Or we'll never know if they came.
Yeah, you'll never know. But it was very interesting, but that's leading into Fourth of July and knowing the extreme lengths that people go through every day to protect our freedom and our ability to be free, it gives you a new appreciation for what they go through.
Freedom and freedom, sir.
And I would, I would go and stay in the wrong hotel a thousand times to listen to that. I gotta talk about the extent they went through to make sure we're free, and we enjoy it because of others giving their actual life for that, so.
Mr. Chairman, one of my highlights, I just can't help it, is I love saying anything and doing anything about Franklin County and promote it, is on the, on one of the speakers, we had John Solomon, our executive director, and I'm going to tell y'all something, he nailed it, boy, he really did. And I said, the one thing, the one thing that got it was before him, it came Palm Beach and their, their terrorist development stuff, and they collect something like seven-point-four billion dollars in TDC funds.
Well, that's the associated, yeah, associated taxes.
Yeah, and I'm saying, Lord, but when John come along, I'm like, Michael, I need to get rid of my mem, but when John come along, he had some commissioners that used to be here a long time ago, and they, commissioners now, one of them was Diane Andrews, she was working at the prison here in Franklin for a long time, and boy, she started telling everybody what our Franklin County was about, you know, and it makes you think, it makes you proud to know that, that we have such standing in this state as commissioners and as association, that they recognize Franklin County and it's good things to offer. The other thing is, one more thing, our nation is in turmoil, as anybody knows it, and I would ask everybody to pray for our nation, and I'm going to tell you the reason why, because apparently there's been some threats to our European bases, on a, on the US bases over in the Europe, European front, and they're at, it's, I know Otis and Anthony will understand, they're at the Charlie, Charlie, they said it's a, it's a ranking that Charlie is the second highest alert, so they're at Charlie over there in the European thing, and it just puts me in my head that we need to really pray and pray hard, because these terrorist groups, just like the CIA guys, they're everywhere, so you don't ever know, and I just, I just feel like I need to ask everybody in Franklin County and around to pray for our country. We need it, and as commissioners, we need prayers. We have a lot of decisions to make, and it's us being uplifted by the prayers of our people to, you know, and I just, I can't talk about it too much, because I'm like everybody else, I get emotional about, I get emotional about my country, real emotional. But anyway, so we just need to keep vigilant and pray and everything and know that God will take care of everything.
And Mr. Chairman, just one more thing, getting back to the TDC thing, Palm Beach County, there had twenty-something members on that board?
Twenty-five.
So we just, they liked Ms. Hoxton to ours, but twenty-five members to that TDC, on the TDC board for Palm Beach County.
Wow, geez.
Seven, seven of those, the board elects, the board picks.
Yes.
How do you get anything done?
That's a good question. They do, because they got seven-point-whatever-billion dollars and...
Seven-point-four billion. I mean to tell you, it's something, but it made, it made me proud, and I know it made the other commissioners feel really good too and proud to have somebody like John Solomon. I mean, he kicked it right off, and I'm saying, oh, Lord, and, and really, some of the numbers that he had up there, I didn't know it. He said four-hundred-and-sixty million dollars worth of tourist revenue coming into this county, that's a lot of money, a lot of money.
And as Commissioner Amos said, that's not our money, that's people coming to stay here's money.
Yeah, that's right.
I was glad to be in attendance, and it was, it was a good conference, and welcome aboard at TDC, Ms. Hoxton, and I was glad to, that Mr. Solomon was able to speak. It's putting us forward, it's putting us on its map, so I was, I was really happy to see that. And when I took, I'm a note taker.
I was taking notes, bud.
When Ms. Adrian Hasslett was speaking, what really, what really resonated with me was, your life could change in three seconds.
Yep.
Your life changed in three seconds.
Yes.
So take three seconds, three minutes, three hours to call and appreciate and get your affairs in order.
She was funny, she was so funny.
Definitely inspirational. And, and again, that, on that same note, I was complaining about the hotel situation a while ago, you look at people like that and what they deal with, it's like, that's miniscule stuff compared to what people like her, you know, we're, we're quick to get in our own little sorrows and our own little issues, but then you look at people like that and you think, jeez, I've got, I have no complaints, you know, I'm blessed, so.
She was good there.
Not, you know, not prolonging the thing, but I had to go to a conference a week before last, and I was able to meet, school safety conference, I was able to meet the parents of the victims that lost their children in Parkland. That's always very tough. You know, I'm a strong guy, but when you start, you know, you start talking about children and, and I had the opportunity to go actually see the aftermath of the shooting, I know I couldn't because I didn't want it to affect me, but, you know, it's, and all the parents said the same thing, all three of them said, you know, we start it like a regular day, you know, someone forgot to say I love you, and it was, that's very touching.
It is.
I don't know why I said that, but, three seconds, that's what I'm talking about, three seconds.
Three seconds.
It was a, a good conference. You know, I didn't give anybody COVID this time, so we survived, but, but now, the only thing is, last year, I think they had a little more workshops that was more oriented to what was appealing for us, and I think that's why we were all kind of bunched up. In Attorney Schuler, we did have space, so. But, but no, it was a good conference. I will tell you this, that you got a board of county commissioners that's working for you, you know, obviously, we couldn't get away, because we had to get an Uber back, but, but no, we, we, from what I sat there and, and witnessed, it was a, you know, you got a good board, they're working for you. I was cracking jokes with everybody, I'm the mood lighter, but these guys were doing the work. But there was one thing that I don't think anybody really got to appreciate was that race between Commissioner Sanders and Ms. Lilly on them cars.
Exactly, they don't stay there. But they took our horns away from us.
They did take their horns away, but...
They did. Now, she says she won, but I think I won it, but, but my battery was going dead at the same.
We represented Franklin well, trust me.
We had fun. But you know, that's commitment right there, that's what you call commitment, that I'm going to go down there no matter what it takes me to do my job, I'm going to do my job. It's hard, it's hard, but you know what, I love it and I love, I love working for the faith.
Yep, all five of us were down there, and it was, that was, that was good. Divide and conquer, learn.
It is, it's, when you take a group of residents such as yourselves, it makes it very easy to chair a board that, that has the right heart, and that's all I'll say. It's very easy to chair. You know, Commissioner Sanders has been in this seat before, and I remember her really stressing to us that we need to be a part of things, we need to attend things, we need to go wherever Franklin County's got a seat, the table, somebody needs to fill that seat. And we've been able to do that, and it, it does, makes you feel good to be a part of Franklin County.
And Mr. Chairman, one more thing, not to belabor, go on, remember what was going, but I want to congratulate Chairman Jones, because he was elected as the vice chairman to, to vice chair the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Board for the Florida Association of Counties Board of Directors. So that's a huge honor, because he, he has to be elected by the, no, no, by the FATF president. The FATF president gets to choose, that's why he's an at-large FATF Board of Director, so he was elected, and, and we don't vote on it, the president gets to make the decision as to who he wants to be his, but, chairs and vice chairs for these boards, and Chairman, our good old Franklin County Chairman Jones was elected as the vice chair for that board, so.
That's what I'm talking about.
Rural Affairs.
Again, Franklin County on the map, we're, people are knowing Franklin County now, that's for sure.
You know, that's, that's sitting here, it's sitting there and, and going through everything and seeing people and everything, it took me back to reminiscing, and if I reminisce too much, y'all tell me. But, you know, I look there and I see a whole brand-new slate of commissioners there, and then I remember back when I was a new commissioner, scared to death, you know, and then gradually, and then all my old friends, I mean, it's like that country song, all my old friends is gone, you know, and, but now I see good stuff happening, and that makes it, that's what that association's about, it's about bringing all of us together, and even though we may be Palm Beach in Franklin, or Miami, you know, Miami-Dade and whatever, we still have the same problems, but maybe just in a different way. And it's the way that we can network and, and help people, because as I say, the story in two thousand five, two thousand six, when the economy busted and boomed out here in Franklin County, and we didn't, this board at that time didn't know where the money was coming from to fund our department, because the, the land bin was gone, you know, here. Miami-Dade stepped up and said, we've got money if Franklin County needs to borrow it, we've got a hundred-and-seventy-three million dollars in reserves, and if Franklin County needs a penny, all we got to do is just let them down. That's what I'm talking about, right there, and it just, it makes me so happy to see y'all are keeping it on our side, and, and you will get that networking done, get in with them people, and they'll become your best friends. That's the way me and Ms. Lilly get, that's the reason why we raced all the time. We've been best friends since nineteen ninety-eight, that's how we started, Commissioner. So, anyway, thank y'all for the time.
Say one thing, and I didn't share this with y'all, but I can do it here in, in the meeting, when we left that last workshop with TDC, I was speaking with a, my final comment, I made it in while me and a lady was walking out, and I told her, I said, the problem, and this is, and I explained it to her, I said, what is unique between Gulf and Franklin County is that you, you see those kind of numbers coming in money-wise, I said, but we're, we're strangled on how we can spend it. And I said, and that's where we need support from the rest of the counties in the state of Florida, because we're, if I'm not mistaken, I believe us in Gulf are the only two that are coastal, small counties that, that bring in all this revenue from the TDT, but our hands are tied and we can't properly spend it the way we need to, to help our community. And she gave me a card, she said, you know, I've never thought about it, I actually compared it to, you know, the federal fisheries, you know, you got five Gulf states and the other forty-five states don't care what happens to us, and I told her, I said, I feel like that from a state perspective, you've got two little counties here, and all the other counties in the state of Florida could care less what transpired, so we need some help, and she was like, well, I'm, gave me a card, said, you know, we can, we can work with that, and I believe, Small County Association, all of us, maybe if we can get some leverage, get, get some people talking with our legislators, and we can get some change eventually, but we are unique, we did have a conversation, and she, she told me she had some good ideas, so I'm going to go back and visit with her and, and see what kind of approach we can possibly take going forward. Maybe we can partner with Gulf, with this lady, she can put us into contact, you know, put us with, who we need to be put with and, and get a bigger voice or platform. I mean, I know, I know there's been some language, or some conversations, but the more allies we can get with that, the better off we'll be.
Strengthen numbers, for sure.
For sure. Well, that's already something, when I knew about the appointment for Rural Affairs, I told them, I said, the only thing I really want to talk about is, is to amend our TDT language, so we can, you know what I mean, same thing. So, and they, they said, yeah, we'll put it on, last year, it was on one of the, it wasn't an actual policy, it was a, a goal, but this year, I think we're going to...